Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to Albany City Council Meeting Wednesday, October 13th at 6:00 P. M. Love to see everyone here today. I'd like to call the meeting to order and Counselor Marilyn Smith will lead us into Pledge of Allegiance. Are you sharing this? There we go.
All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we roll call? Well, I kind of went out of order there. Apologize.
Counselor Kupczynski.
Here.
Counselor Johnson. Counselor Smith.
Here.
Counselor Olson.
Here.
Counselor Novak. Counselor Bartholomew.
Here.
Mayor Johnson II.
Here. Thank you very much for the roll call, Allison. Appreciate it. Next up is a proclamation. We're doing a proclamation for National Hispanic Heritage Month. I've asked my good friend, Maryam Guadalupe Cummings, a mother, advocate, executive director of Casa Latina Unidos, vice chair of the Eight Human Relations Council and school board member for Lynn Benton Lincoln LSD to read the proclamation in Spanish.
Proclamación. I'm right here. Can you hear me okay?
You turn your camera on, sir, please.
I can't. The host is not letting me.
Okay, no problem.
Hey, host, turn her on.
I know. It's like I can't. I want you to see my face.
It actually says that you can start video.
Oh, it says you cannot start your video because the host has stopped it.
Oh, man. All right. Here, hold on one second.
Okay.
There you go.
There it is. Perfect. Okay, now you can see me. Perfect. All right. So, thank you, Mayor Alex Johnson II for giving me the opportunity to speak and do this proclamation in Spanish. Proclamación, mes de la herencia hispana, del 15 de septiembre al 15 de octubre. Considerando que cada año Estados Unidos observa el mes nacional de la herencia hispana al celebrar la cultura, el legado y las innumerables contribuciones de quienes vinieron de España, México, el Caribe, América Central y América del Sur. Y por cuanto la herencia hispana se ha celebrado oficialmente desde 1968. Y por cuanto celebramos el mes de la herencia hispana para mostrar nuestra gratitud por los logros, la inspiración y el servicio que nuestra comunidad hispana y latina brinda todos los días. Y considerando que las personas hispanas y latinas ayudan a impulsar la economía de nuestros pequeños negocios como trabajadores, propietarios de empresas y empresarios, enriquecer nuestro entorno académico como maestros, profesores e ingenieros, participar en el buen gobierno y en mejorar nuestra sociedad y asegurar nuestra salud y comunidad como enfermeras, médicos, cuidadores y trabajadores de cuidado infantil. Ahora, por lo tanto, yo, Alexander D. Johnson II, alcalde de la ciudad de Albany, proclamo que del 15 de septiembre al 15 de octubre como mes de la herencia hispana en Albany. Y también hago un llamado a los residentes, agencias gubernamentales, instituciones públicas y privadas, empresas y escuelas en Albany para apreciar y celebrar a nuestra comunidad hispana y latina.
Thank you, Maryam, for that.
Thank you.
Matthew?
Oh, I didn't know if you wanted to read it in English as well.
I do, I'm in English, but you're still up there with the Spanish version.
Hmm, shouldn't be.
It's showing me a Spanish version still.
Ray, are you seeing that?
Seeing it in English.
Yeah. I am too.
Okay.
It just changed.
Okay, mine must be slow. Okay, we find it. Mine still hasn't changed, Matt.
I don't know. I think that's on your end.
So, Ray, can you go ahead and read it? Because I can't.
Proclamation Hispanic Heritage Month, September 15th, October 15th, 2021. Whereas each year the United States observes National Hispanic Heritage Month by celebrating the culture, heritage, and countless contributions of those who came from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, Central America, and South America. And whereas Hispanic heritage has been celebrated officially since 1968. And whereas we celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month to show our gratitude for the achievements, inspiration, and service our Hispanic and Latino community provide every day. And whereas Hispanic and Latino individuals help drive our small business economy as workers, business owners, and entrepreneurs, enrich our academic environment as teachers, professors, and engineers, participate in the good governance and betterment of our society, and ensure our health and community as nurses, doctors, caretakers, and childcare workers. Now, therefore, I, Alexander D. Johnson II, mayor of the city of Albany, do hereby proclaim September 15th through October 15th as Hispanic Heritage Month in Albany, and I also call upon residents, governmental agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools in Albany to cherish and celebrate our Hispanic and Latino community. In witness thereof, I have here and to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Albany to be affixed this 13th day of October, 2021, Alexander D. Johnson II, mayor.
Thank you. And my screen just switched to it. Thank you so much, Counselor Kupczynski. Next on the agenda is a coin award presentation by our Albany Police Chief, Marshall Hardin. Is she with us? I saw her earlier. Chief Hardin?
I did too, but I'm no longer seeing her in the list.
There she is. She just popped on.
Oh, okay.
The internet is doing some crazy things this evening. Chief, are you there? Chief Hardin? I didn't want to get, I didn't want to start. Internet froze. Okay, so can we do the, we'll do the, the coin award presentation after the public hearings then. Give her time to reblur her computer. So, we're going to skip to number five on the presentation on the agenda, public hearings. Item A, Appeal for Historic Review of Substantial Substitute Materials at 423rd Avenue Southeast. H I dash 12 dash 21 dash Nikki Cross will be bringing that to us, page four to 106 of your packet. So, let me go to the mayor's guide to talk about that. Let me go back here. That's the man. Let me just a second. So, next on our agenda is a quasi judicial public hearing regarding the appeal for planning file H I-12-21. The application for historic review of the use of substitute materials was denied by the Landmarks Commission on September 1st, 2021. The applicant has appealed that decision to the city council. I call to order the quasi judicial public hearing at 6:08 P. M. If you wish to testify, there will be two options available, which were described in the agenda. Do any members declare a conflict of interest? If yes, we should disqualify themselves. Any members declare a conflict of interest? Saying none? Do members wish to report and exportate contact?
I've driven by there several times. Noticed the unfortunate new windows.
So, I actually stopped by the school. I'd never been by the church. I'd never seen it before. And I was looking at it and I talked to a couple of people out front, and that's pretty much it. That was a few weeks ago. And also, I considered a site visit as well.
Yeah, I had a site visit about a week ago also.
Okay. Is that it, counsel? Do many members wish to abstain from participating in the proceedings? Okay. Does anyone wish to challenge the city council's right to determine this matter or the participation of the council member in the hearing and decision? If so, please turn on your camera and raise your hand to be called upon. If you are attending by phone, please unmute yourself and state your name so you can be called upon. Can people still hear me?
Yes.
All right, thank you. At this time, I call upon a reading of the meeting procedures. Matthew Rutgers?
Thank you, Mayor. So, for those wishing to testify, please be aware that you must raise an issue with enough detail to afford the city council and parties an opportunity to respond to the issue if you later want to raise that issue on appeal. Testimony and evidence must be directed towards the approval standard staff will describe or other criteria in the comprehensive plan or development code that you believe applied to the decision. If additional documents or evidence are provided by any party, the city council may allow a continuance or leave the record open to allow the parties a reasonable opportunity to respond. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to the proposed conditions of approval with enough detail to allow the local government or its designated to respond to the, to the issue precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court.
Okay, at this time, I call upon, for the staff report from project planner Nikki Cross.
Thank you. It says the host has disabled my screen sharing.
You should have it now.
Okay, thank you. I'm just going to load my presentation. One moment. Okay, can everyone see that? All right. I am Nikki Cross, planner for the Community Development Department, and this is an appeal hearing for H I-12-21, Historic Review for the Use of Substitute Materials. This is an appeal of the Landmarks Commission Decision of Denial for H I-12-21. The historic review of substitute materials is a type III quasi judicial review with a mailed notice for a public hearing. The Landmarks Commission hearing was held on September 1st, 2021, and the proposal was denied by the commission. The applicants filed an appeal of that decision on September 9, 2021. On September 21, a notice for this appeal public hearing before the city council was mailed to the property owner, applicant, and any person who provided testimony at the September 1 hearing. A notice was also posted on the subject property on October 6. This is a de novo hearing, meaning that the appellant may introduce new evidence to the record. I'll now give an overview of the proposal for the use of substitute materials. The subject property is 423rd Avenue Southeast, and it occupies the entire block between Third and Fourth and Railroad and Jackson. The property is within the H M Hackelman Montez zoning district and within the Hackelman historic, excuse me, historic district overlay. The structure is known as the Albany High School Building and was built in the American Renaissance style in 1909, shown in the top left. In 1930, a gymnasium and auditorium wings were added onto the building in the Art Deco style. The 1925 Sanborn map on the left shows the original central building, and the 1949 Sanborn map on the right shows the addition of gymnasium and auditorium wings. The applicant explains that the current owners, Willamette Community Church, began working on replacing windows over 20 years ago and have replaced a total of 156 out of 242 window sashes over that time. The current phase of work includes 34 windows on the primary facade on Third Avenue shown in this photo. Work was halted on the current phase of replacement by city compliance case B C C 4621. The applicant seeks to remedy that compliance case through this application and through the issuance of a pending building permit. The applicant provided this diagram of the current phase of work. Yellow indicates historic windows which are not to be replaced, including the basement and the iconic semicircular window. Blue indicates the 23 windows already replaced with PVC vinyl window sashes, and green indicates the 11 remaining windows to be replaced with PVC vinyl window sashes. A D C Article 7 provides the review criteria for the use of substitute materials. I will now read that criteria. The city of Albany interprets the Secretary of Interior Standards for Rehabilitation on Compatibility to allow substitute siding and windows only under the following conditions. The building or structure is rated historic non-contributing, or in the case of a historic contributing building or structure, the existing siding, windows, or trim is so deteriorated or damaged that it cannot be repaired, and finding materials that would match the original siding, windows, or trim is cost prohibitive. Any application for the use of substitute siding, windows, or trim is decided on a case-by-case basis before the Landmarks Commission. The structure is rated historic contributing, and to demonstrate the deteriorated and damaged state of the windows, the applicant provided photos of the condition of the original window sashes indicating damage or broken panes, broken sash cord pulleys, and leaking windows. The applicant also provided cost comparisons for the replacement of substitute PVC vinyl window sashes versus wood sashes. The wood sashes are estimated at approximately twice the cost of the proposed vinyl, and the estimated cost of replacing 34 windows with wood sashes is roughly $105,000. The A D C provides design criteria, and I'll read that. The proposed substitute materials must approximate in placement, profile, size, proportion, and general appearance of the existing siding, windows, or trim. Substitute siding, windows, and trim must be installed in a manner that maximizes the ability of a future property owner to remove the substitute materials and restore the structure to its original condition using traditional materials. The proposed material must be finished in a color appropriate to the age and style of the house and the character of both the streetscape and overall district. The proposed siding or trim must not be green to resemble wood. The original 34 windows are wood one-over-one double-hung windows. The substitute material is a white PVC vinyl window sash seen here on the upper story where it's already been installed. The top image shows the current window conditions in 2021, and the applicant provided this photo to show the partially completed replacement of PVC vinyl sashes. The bottom shows, for comparison, the original wood windows, photo taken in 1924. Continuing with our criteria, the proposed siding, windows, or trim must not damage, destroy, or otherwise affect decorative or character-defining features of the building. Unusual examples of historic siding, windows, or trim may not be covered or replaced with substitute materials. The covering of existing historic wood window or door trim with substitute trim will not be allowed if the historic trim can be reasonably repaired. Repairs may be made with fiberglass or epoxy to bring the service to its original profile, which then can be finished like the original. Substitute siding or trim may not be applied over historic brick, stone, stucco, or other masonry. The applicant proposes to replace only window sashes with a substitute PVC vinyl, which will not damage or destroy the wood window frames that still exist. This diagram shows the upper and lower window sashes, so you can see that part of the window. Note, the unusual windows, such as the semicircular window on the front facade, are not proposed to be replaced with this application, and the original wood window sills are not to be replaced, whereas any trim or siding. The remainder of the code criteria applies only to applications for siding and trim, and this applicant has not proposed any replacement of siding or trim, so these criteria do not apply. Staff recommends that city council approve H I-12-21, thereby allowing the vinyl window sash substitutions on the building historically known as the Albany High School. Council has the following options. Option 1, approve H I-12-21, thereby approving the proposal with conditions of approval as suggested or modified. Or option 2, deny the application. Staff has received written testimony from four members of the public opposed to this appeal. David Pinney, David Abar, Cameron Suttlemeyer, and Bernadette Nederer. Written testimony was also received opposed to this appeal from Richard Engman, representing the Friends of Historic Albany Group. And testimony in support of the Landmarks Commission was received from the Albany Visitors Association president, Jody Cruz. The testimony has been included in your packets. Are there any questions from the council?
Counsel, do you have any questions? See, Counselor Kupczynski has his hand up first. I can't hear you, Counselor Kupczynski.
I'm not sure this is the right place to ask staff, but I can't speak to what's happened in the past, but at what point recent, recently did the people that are making the proposal initially and/or the contractor understand that they're in a historic district and have to abide by the rules of the historic district? It seems a massive failure on somebody's part that they did not know or don't admit to knowing that they were in violation. And it seems to me that we're being asked to aid and abet that continuance with this process. So, I'm just wondering how far back does it go that they actually know that they were in violation?
Well, I, I believe the church representatives will be speaking, and they could certainly answer that question. As far as I know, their awareness of the issue was when they were issued the code compliance case this fall.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Kupczynski. Any other councilor have any questions or questions? Counselor Johnson?
Yes, along those lines, I was just wondering. From what I understand, is that this project was started, what, 20 years ago or more? And so, it doesn't sound like it was all done at one time. So, it's kind of like, as money came in, they would go ahead and have someone do it. And so, I think it, it, it just sounds like, okay, we're not doing the whole project, and so, we're just going to replace a window. Maybe they weren't aware of it. I don't know. Hindsight is 2020. But, yeah, so, it just seems like it was a one or two or three windows at a time for years and years and years. And, I mean, it looks great. And to a layperson, at least to me, I can't tell the difference between, you know, from the sidewalk or from the road, if it's vinyl or if it's wood or whatever. Now, the basement, I was surprised that they're not going to replace that because they do look a little different, but I still think it looks very good. And so, I'd just like to hear a little bit more and make the decision then. Thank you.
Counselors, anybody else has anything? I'm surprised. We will now take, since there's no other comment from councilor questions, we'll now take comment from the applicant. We would like, will the applicant please state your name, address, and make any comments you have for the council? And I have Scott Miller as an applicant. And also, Lee Hick.
Lee Hick, yes. And the host has got to unblock my video.
There you go.
Great, thank you.
And same for Scott, please. Okay, start my video.
So, gentlemen, I'll give you each three minutes to state your case to us. I really appreciate you keep on time.
Okay. Sorry, I didn't realize we had three minutes only?
Yes, each.
Oh, okay. I was, I thought we had a presentation to make. I'm sorry. I apologize for that.
We're ready.
Okay, I'll go. Counselors and Mayor Johnson, thank you for allowing us to meet with you tonight. We will be asking to finish this windows project. Brief history, in 1964, our church was looking to get a larger building. This one from the city opened up. We were the only ones who made an offer, and so, we were, became the owners of this in 1964. One of our main priorities back then was to be a blessing to our community, to our neighbors, and to the many people that call this home. Ways that we try to be a blessing, one is to take care of this facility. As Counselor Johnson said, it looks beautiful. That's one of our aims, to be a blessing that way. In fact, after we had a fire eight years ago, we took much care to make the inside look almost to an original time period with lighting and flooring, and we'd love for you to come see it someday. Another way we want to be a blessing, though, is to provide a safe and functional facility. And so, 20 years ago, I wasn't the lead pastor at the time, but we realized that a lot of the windows on the south side and the west side, because of the weathering, were not safe and were not functional. Somebody had given us a good chunk of change where we were able to put in those windows at that time and repair some of the bricks so that we could stay here in future years. Over the years, as money has come in, Counselor Johnson, you're you're actually exactly right. What we did was said, hey, we have some money, let's put in some more windows above our playground. We have the single pane glass, it's not safe. So we replaced those three years ago, and then this year we were able to save up some money and said, let's do the third street side so that they would be safe and functional, and and this is the report that Lee Ike would like to give tonight to show that. By no means were we ever trying to get around something. I've read some of the notes that might think that, that was never the case. And Counselor Kupcinski, you're asking, when did we know about this? We didn't know until they told us stop working because for twenty years we hadn't been told to stop working or had complaints about that. So I feel terrible that this is, this has not been a blessing to us or to you, but we thank you tonight for allowing us to share.
Thank you. I want to ask a clarifying question of my city attorney, Sean. So the three-minute rule does apply, correct?
Correct. Three minutes, each each person should should spend three minutes. You, it's at your discretion if you want to give more, but three minutes is the is the limit that we set, so.
Thank you.
I personally would like to hear the full report.
So, thank you, Mr. Miller. We'll now hear from Lee, Mr. Ike.
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor Johnson and counsel for hearing our appeal. I do have a PowerPoint that has a few slides that would enhance what Nikki showed. I will try to get through those quickly if you'd allow me to share my screen. I could enhance the
For a second, sir. Sean, council, would you like to see the PowerPoint?
I would.
Okay, so let's go ahead and give Mr. Ike the opportunity to share the PowerPoint.
Thank you very much.
Can you trick, can you allow him to do that?
Am I sharing my screen here?
Not yet. There we go. Yes, go ahead, sir.
Okay. I'm going to move quickly through some of these because of the time constraint. Nikki actually covered some of these. But our purpose here is obviously to review and 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 really approve, gain approval for continuing. We do have some updated information on window materials and the design reasons that we that we ended up using. And we do want to reconsider the staff's independent report that recommends approval with the conditions that Nikki expressed. This is just quickly the two sides of the school that are there, and I will point out there was pretty significant changes to this building in nineteen thirty. In the lower right-hand photo right here, these iconic parapet walls were removed in the front third street side when they added the gymnasium and the auditorium. I am highlighting here maybe a little bit more clearly than Nikki's colored photo. These are the eleven windows that we would like to finish up to finish out this space. This arch photo down here with with the high school kids in front of it was actually right here in the middle of this building as the primary exit, so there were significant changes made to this building in nineteen thirty, the Charles Burkcroft Building that was modified at that point. Here's a photo of the window panes that have been removed, and they are significantly damaged. The soft wood over here has shrunk, the loose frames. There's cracks in these frames. The installer confirmed with us that the windows have moved slightly over the years, they're not as plumb as they used to be. There is an issue concerning safety in the glass. I don't want to blow that out of proportion, but someone said that at Central School, those windows are old, and there's no concern about those kids in school with those windows. I do note that the Central School windows are divided in two by a wooden muntin that actually cuts that window pane in half, which actually strengthens those windows by four times our windows. Our windows are twelve to thirteen square feet of individual glass pane in each sash. And I do want to emphasize that we just are removing the sash. And so I want to quickly also address the, get this, move this out of here quickly. The ADC seven point two substitute materials that quote so deteriorate damage that it cannot be repaired. This is the photo that we think is the illustration of that. We don't know if the frames hold the windows, or the windows are holding the frames, or the glass is holding the frames. The other issue is someone would say, well, you just simply take those sashes to a repair shop, fix them and put them back in, and that's neglecting the idea, the the aspect that the window frames themselves have moved, and they're tight in some places, these don't move. We have fixed the counterbalances many times over the years, but when a window frame, a window sash is jammed, the window does not move up and down. And so the safety issue is principally the concern of having to pry these windows open or pushing too hard on these windows. What's in play right now with the COVID requirement for schools, you have to have ventilation, and so not all the school windows were operable at that time, nor were they operable in the twenties on the south side when the church chose to replace windows due to heat gain. So the issue is is clearly there. The reason they went to thermal pane glass and tempered glass because that's the standard for schools these days. I do want to address briefly the cost of materials to match are cost prohibitive. That's a quote out of the ADC seven point two. That's our issue, that's not the city issue, that's not the council issue. That is our issue on spending additional funds for wooden windows or composite windows versus the windows that we chose. We have top-quality vinyl windows. The issue there is if you had a house with four to five windows that you doubled from five thousand to ten thousand dollars, that's one issue. Having fifty-five thousand dollars issued to a hundred and ten thousand dollars issued is another issue. Pastor Scott mentioned that we are an active member of the community. We do financially support teen challenge. We have redone the Children's Visitor Center at DHS. We do serve and support financially. They serve Inc., where we help paint the schools, and so our finances are limited. We do, we do have, we struggle as to where to put our our finances.
Mr. Ike, you're off topic. We're talking about the school, the buildings and the windows.
Thank you.
Please finish your presentation, because now you're you're going over other other materials not relevant to this conversation.
I'm sorry, thank you.
So so city attorney, go ahead.
The the
Excuse me.
Mayor, I just wanted to clarify. The three-minute time limit is applicable to public testimony on this. I, in these Zoom meetings, it's a little different because your your applicants are usually tag teaming from different locations on different computers. The three-minute time limit doesn't apply to the applicant doing their presentation. We can set time limits for that. It, you know, sometimes we'll give a fifteen-minute time limit, sometime to that effect, but the three-minute time limit only applies to the public testimony on this once we get to that. So I I apologize for any confusion on that, so just wanted to clarify.
Thank you. So thank you, city attorney. Go ahead, Mr. Ike.
Thank you very much. We were invited by the commission to go downtown and take a look at commercial buildings down there with the types of windows that are in the historic district downtown. We are classified by the city as a commercial building as far as the permit goes. However, the city code classifies us as an institutional building, not a commercial building, so there's a little bit of confusion as to why we needed a building permit or not. Residential codes require it, don't do not require it, the commercial codes do require it. I did note that there's plenty of wooden windows downtown, some are in very good shape, some in poor shape. The upper windows in the lower right-hand is an example of new windows. You cannot tell whether they are new wood or vinyl in those historic openings. There are plenty of aluminum frames downtown, so the material substitution that we're talking about has a variety of types downtown. There's the aluminum windows and unpainted and painted. We were invited by the commission to take a look at the J.C. Penney Building, which has the composite frames and windows called Fibrix. It is sixty percent plastic and forty percent wood fiber that satisfies the people that really need to have wood involved in their windows. The light, the light tan here on the window clearly has a wood grain look to it. The dark brown features that hold these glass panels in place, you cannot tell whether they're wood or vinyl or or aluminum. They are smooth and 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 very dark colored. Our neighbor up the street is the old Madison School Building, built in nineteen twenty. It is a half a block outside the historic district. I'm not sure why it's outside the district that we're in, but it's five blocks from our city on Fourth Avenue, and the historic photo is on the left with the old windows, much as central house in it. Little different than ours, and that ours are solid, full glass plates. They have currently have aluminum insets into their historic frames. That gets us to our windows, and here's the example, and here's the point that we want to make on our windows, is that the left side is the original old window sashes in the wood frames, in the wood trim, and on the right is the old wood frames, the old wood trim, and the new vinyl insets that are in place. Seventy-five percent of the exposed historic wood is still in play and untouched as the new sashes are removed and insets are put in. It takes about ten minutes to pull the sash out. It takes about fifteen to twenty minutes to put the new insert in. Our window sills are ten feet above the ground, and they're impossible to look at up close without a lift or a ladder, and so you cannot get up close to them to make the distinction on how they would look in the white-on-white frame situation. On the fourth street, I will point out that the wood portion of that frame right here is still intact. This is the vinyl portion. Go back here real quick. There's no significant, there is no sign of degradation in appearance, material, or function. The city posts a lot of images, a lot of videos concerning vinyl windows and how they have a five to ten year life. They sag and then they they go bad. Those must be cheap windows. We have very top-grade windows, and then after twenty years, these have no sign of degradation. Regarding the design of the windows, the three-panel versus the two-panel window. This is the language out of the ADC seven point two point one, two one oh. The proposed substitute material must approximate. They must have general appearance, profile, size, proportion. This does require discernment and judgment on anyone who looks at these and offers that opinion. We've already had an opinion offered tonight, and unfortunately, all architecture has opinions on both liking something or not liking something. I will point out that the three panels that were selected, for for other reasons than their appearance, do replicate the three-panel design out of the nineteen thirty additions to the third street side, which is the gymnasium and auditorium. We looked at redesigning these windows at the commissioner's recommendation, and that is to go back to a two-panel window that would match the existing. I contacted and worked closely with Anderson Window, which is a high-quality manufacturer of both composite and wooden windows. And they set a limit as to how tall their windows can go as two-panel windows. I'll jump down to item three. The maximum window height for two equal panels is six foot five inches, after which they have to then double the top and half the lower panel. The maximum overall height of a composite double-pane window is six foot eleven. Our windows are at eight foot two inches tall. We are a good foot above the limit that that manufacturer, any manufacturer, will make a two-panel window. They suggested, okay, let's go to a fixed top panel and what's called a casement lower panel, which is a crank-out type window. The widest they will make is thirty-five inches. Our windows are forty-four inches wide. All that is based on the 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 weight of the window, the the length of the track that it travels in, the stress on the frame as the crank-out windows are used, and so their solution to us was to use a fixed panel and then go to double windows below. That's exactly what we did nearly twenty years ago, and that's the reason that we were given by our installer in terms of those windows being three-panel windows instead of two-panel windows. The double-pane glass nearly doubles the weight of that lift sash that has to go up. The other thing is because the windows are not quite true, the vinyl windows gives the installer some flexibility to fit that window into a window frame that's not quite plumb any longer. So we've we've gone through that route, and Anderson confirmed what we had expressed in our original application to the land commission before we did our homework after that meeting. The final thing I want to share is that I also looked up in Portland a versatile company that specializes in historic commercial building windows. The maximum double-hung windows they will make is six foot ten inches tall, again about the same as Anderson, Genwell, or in ours are Milgard windows. So what are we asking for? We're asking for the acceptance for the upgraded vinyl materials for substitute insets. That's because for they must approximate their general appearance and their compatibility. I mentioned that it requires a a judgment and considerations for those things, and I mentioned Central School, and forty years ago, and Central School is going to be closed. We had to use, the engineers and the city leaders had to use judgment to keep that school open. I know this is off-topic, Mayor, I apologize, but it was a judgment call to open up that school when it doesn't meet any codes back then, and it was done back then under the the consideration and judgment of the factors involved. The second thing we're asking for is we're asking for the city clearly to consider the staff's recommendation for approval of our application. No other windows will be replaced, including the twenty-one that are on Third Avenue. No permanent changes to the exterior without a separate review under Article Seven will take place. As Pastor Scott mentioned, this is phase three of what we thought was continuation of something that was probably approved nearly twenty years ago. Unfortunately, there are no records at the city of that action from twenty years ago, and there were some changes in record-keeping and some other things, and so we mistakenly thought that we were continuing something that had started. And finally, we're asking for the approval of the app for us to replace the eleven remaining windows on Third with the same quality windows, which are the hundred twenty-two windows that have been placed over the last twenty years, and with that, I will be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Would the applicant, we said that that made the comments, the council, so now we're going to take, so council, you have any questions for the gentleman, for Mr. Ike or Pastor Ike? And then we'll move on to public comment. Counsel? So I see no hands raised. So we will now take public Oh, go ahead, Counselor Novak.
Yeah, I just want to see if I'm understanding correctly. It, from from what I just understood from Mr. Ike's presentation, they've worked with multiple companies looking for solutions, and they've done the only things that they could do in terms of how these windows need to be put in with double pane instead of single pane. I don't, I don't understand if there was some other option. It's it seems to me from what from what I'm understanding that they've done this the only way that they knew that they knew was possible. I don't know if that's making sense. I just, I I don't know what other alternative they would have.
Okay, I I I, great question. So we're going to hear from other folks, Counselor Novak.
Okay, thank you.
We have more public testimony to take. Counselor Olson, please go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to ask Mr. Ike, did you talk to any contractors about the possibility of taking the sashes out and repairing them and replacing the glass? Perhaps with safety glass, because in the case of Central School, the big windows in the gym, a contractor, Alan Nelson, you may know Alan, he's now retired. But he took those windows out, he took the original glass out, and he put safety glass in and then put the sashes back in the frames. And that kind of thing can be done, and I'm wondering if you looked around and see if you could. I know you started twenty years ago and the process was going, but it's not so noticeable on the back side of the building, but it would sure be nice if the front side looked original.
Well, thank you, Counselor. I I did call the three contacts at the city post on their website regarding window refurb refurbishing. One never got back to me. A second one called and told me that they no longer do this kind of work. And they said the only company that did it, and I, the name is escaping me right now, but I think it was the one that redid the library downtown, is out of state until after the first of the year, and so I did not make a direct connection with the contractors involving, and I'm not And I'm not sure, were they movable sashes? You mentioned they're essential. Were they were they lifting sashes that were put in and were they basically four feet by by three and a half feet wide kind of session?
Uh, I don't know the dimensions, but I think they're uh comparable size. I think they're a little wider than the your four foot width. Yeah, and yeah, yes, they do. They do open and close and they are uh double hung with sash weights. Yeah, and they were operable at the time. Oh, about thirty years ago that he fixed them. Yes.
Good. Thank you, Counselor Olson. Um, I'd like to have public testimony from the people that are waiting to speak.
Sure.
Thank you. We will now take be taking public testimony from first from those in favor of the applications. Or the applications, followed by those in opposition to the or with concerns. And finally, from anyone who is neutral. If anyone wishes to enter exhibit into the record as part of the public testimony. Uh, please briefly describe the exhibit and then email it to uh, C D A A at city of Albany dot net. Now, those who register speak during this meeting will now be called upon, present your verbal testimony. I have a list that I'll be working from. And the first person in favor will the first two.
Wait of order.
Yes.
This is Carrie McQuillan. I am registered to to testify against. However, I want to um, just comment before those who are testifying in favor that know that at least I did not hear and I do not know that anyone who testified that there was a three minute limit. So I think on both sides, there are probably carefully prepared remarks, but given that we did not hear about the three minute limit, I propose that the council weigh that for everyone. Um, just for your consideration.
City attorney. The public hearing, I public testimony is limited to three minutes for city council.
That that's correct and is.
It's my discretion to allow it to go further.
It's your discretion. And I mean, and I correct me if I'm wrong, but I think after the second meeting that you were uh elected as mayor, we have installed that three minute limit. So it's been it's been a three minute limit now for quite some time. So it, yeah, that that's just the city council. That's not a planning commission or a landmarks commission rule, but that's a city council rule that we've had in place for.
Yeah, that makes sense and I understand that, but it doesn't say it's not when you receive confirmation of your of your testimony being that you are registered to testify, you don't get that notice and it's not on the um, the agenda. I think if it were on both of those places, that would be totally reasonable, but but people have carefully prepared comments and this is complex and I think you're going to miss out on some of that.
Well, it's like I said, it's going to be a discretion of of the mayor at this point. And and Carrie, this for this question, you're you're testifying tonight?
Not representing the commission as an individual.
Okay, because that's, I mean, you probably there's a little unusual to have the chair of the of the commission come in and testify in a Novo hearing in front of a a different body. Um, but okay.
I was told that that would be permissible when I asked specifically.
Okay.
So so for for this public hearing session is going to be three minute time limit. So there's a Willamette Community Church hand up and Council Olson's hand up. So Willamette Community Church, can you put your actual name in the title?
There's a number of individuals at that site that signed up.
Okay, well, I have, I'm following the rules of the public hearing things. We're going to go with the people in favor first. Each person will have three minutes for public talk.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I do have my hand up.
I did.
And I I have been telling people that we have a three minute rule. But you have the discretion of somebody is in mid sentence that you'll let them finish that.
I said that.
And if they're in mid thought, that you'll let finish, let them finish that. You cut them off if they're going on and on and on, but I.
I agree. Counselor Olson, I agree with you.
So I I certainly hope that you continue with that philosophy.
I will.
Thank you very much. Thanks.
So let me, I I want to go ahead and continue. Thank you, Counselor Olson. With the people that by the rule, the people that voted are in favor go first. The people that are not in favor or against go second and people are neutral go third. So Mr. Crawford, I will calling you when your name comes up. Okay. So the first one for is Larry Crawford. Thank you, sir, for being there. Um, and thank you for putting your name in the box. So Mr. Crawford, your three minutes starts as soon as you start speaking.
Okay. Lowen, okay. Hello, I'm Larry Crawford. I live at four oh five Jefferson Avenue Southeast in Albany. I'm one block away from Willamette Community Church. My wife and I have attended Willamette Community Church for twenty-six years. I am currently an elder at the church. I am a former licensed contractor in both Lynn County and Multnomah County. The purpose of my presentation is to give a brief history of W C C. When my wife and I started attending W C C in nineteen ninety-five, the attendance was a little over a hundred people per Sunday with most attendees over the age of sixty. The church membership and community outreach were declining. The Albany High School building was purchased from the Albany School District in nineteen sixty-four. The facility was in a horrible condition and need of major repair. This include roofing, painting outside and in flooring, plumbing, heating, lighting and windows. Later, after the purchase and occupation of the building and evaluation was made by Pastor Gary Bashin. He concluded that the church needed to sell the building and move the school and church to the suburbs. In nineteen ninety-eight, with new pastor Mike Fleishman, a new vision for the church was struck. The church would maintain a Third Avenue address. And we would seek to reach the community around the church building with the gospel of Jesus Christ. It is at this time, a new motto was communicated. We are a people growing closer to God and helping others along the way. The church body chose to stay in the downtown Albany and influence and share the good news of Jesus Christ with our drug and meth neighbors. The church grew in attendance and outreach to the community. Upon the death of a member, the church received a large donation. The church elders had an energy audit done on the building. And the results showed that the church was spending additional one thousand five hundred to two thousand dollars a month on gas because it's of energy loss through the wood windows. Being good stewards of the resources God has given our church, the decision was made to replace the windows on the west and south sides of the building. The the smoke from the forest fires in the last few years resulted in the recent phase of window replacement. The offices and classrooms were filled with smoke and ash due to the leakage through the old wooden windows. Concerned for health of the students and staff, we initiated the last phase of window replacement. Continuing to be good stewards of the resources God has given the church, it was decide to use the same type and style of affordable windows used on the west and south sides of the building. W C C has been a leader in offering classes to families and the communities through such classes as Financial Peace University, men and women's Bible studies. Mornings for moms, teens and youth programs, Christmas food boxes for the community. We are a huge supporter of teen challenge. We also support a number of churches and school in Sierra Leone, West Africa, and a church in Tabasco, Mexico. Our purpose for gaining and understanding of who God is and what he has done and what he demands of us as followers is our motto for reaching our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crawford. Your comments. Next on the agenda is on the list is Barbara Elick. If I pronounce your name wrong, I apologize. Is Barbara Elick here today?
And it is. Dear City of Albany Board members, my name is Barbara Elick and I live at thirty-one thirty-five Oxford Avenue, Albany, Oregon. I have been a resident of Albany for over twenty years. I'm also an employee of Albany Christian School. I would like to talk to you this evening about the dangers and liabilities of plate glass windows, such as the ones that are in place in the ACS W C C building located at four twenty-third Avenue through my own personal experience. During the fall of two thousand and one, I was involved in an accident that involved a single pane window, which caused major medical trauma to my right arm. As I was trying to pry open a window in an old historic home, my hand slipped from the wooden casing and my arm went right through the window. Unfortunately for my arm, single plate glass does not shatter like the newer glass found uh into these windows and the icicle like glass shard cut through my arm that shaved off a piece of my elbow and barely missed my brachial artery. By the time I was able to make it to the hospital, I had lost enough blood that it required a transfusion and after a hundred and seventy-eight internal stitches and eighty-seven external stitches, I was left spending the next four months rehabilitating my right arm. I don't know if it's possible for you to see this and if I need to submit an exhibit, but I would be happy to show you a picture of the damage that it did to my arm. This traumatic event has led me here tonight to express my deep concerns about the inoperable windows within the ACS building. I currently sit in an office where two of the old plate glass windows in the building remain. They do not open safely and as you can imagine, I'm very nervous about opening these windows. Um, and when we do try to open them, we have to pry them in the same manner that resulted in my injury. I do not have A C. Uh, we don't have A C on our side of the building and I have poor airflow coming into my office. Not only does this create undesirable working conditions, especially in the summer, uh, but it also makes it harder for my office to be in compliance with the OSHA COVID school guidelines. I have great fear and concern over myself, others and especially children, and we have close to four hundred children in this school. Um, where an injury like mine could be potentially life threatening for them. Um, being around such outdated and unsafe windows. There are many windows left in this building that leaves others vulnerable to the hazards of plate glass, making them a safety liability. I would never want anyone to express the trauma that I had to go through or you know, especially for a child. I think that's my biggest concern that I have here. I'm having four hundred children here. Um, this trauma has been great. Obviously, it has cost a lot, but I'm hoping that I can use it for good tonight. Um, thank you for taking the time to listen to me this evening. I greatly appreciate it.
Thank you much. Thank you very much. Um, testimony tonight. Next up is Amy Steele. So please introduce yourself and um tell us share your testimony with us.
Good evening, Mayor and city councilors. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Amy Steele. My husband Dan and I live at five thirty-nine Third Avenue Southeast here in Albany, Oregon. I'm here to testify for the proposed window replacement project at Willamette Community Church at four twenty-third Avenue Southeast. This project was started many years ago and is now in the final phase to replace windows that are damaged, do not open, have gaps of air coming through, have no safety glass posing a safety concern and hazard for that matter, for the students and the staff that use this building as a church and a school. In addition, there is no central air conditioning and when you are on the second and third floors of this building, it is either extremely hot in the summer months or extremely cold in the winter months. Should there be, and there has been, a fire in an emergency, how do you get children and staff out of windows that do not open? By breaking them? Sure. But then you have the shards of glass from old non-safety glass, which could cause severe injuries as has been personally attested to earlier. After reading the staff report that was sent to us by mail, city staff made recommendations to approve this project subject to certain conditions. Those conditions were met. The wood windows are not being replaced, only the sashes, and we are wondering why the staff recommendations are being ignored. My husband would like the council to know that these are Energy Star windows that surpass federal and state codes for energy efficiency. As homeowners of our own historic home in the Hackelman District, we are one block from the church here. We have spent the last four years and over a hundred thousand dollars in restoration, renovating and bringing our home back to life. We understand it is very expensive on an ongoing basis to continue maintaining historic homes. Again, we reiterate, we approve of this project continuing. This this building is a beautiful historic building and is very well taken care of. The church has been very diligent with resources, time and money to preserve this iconic building. We are in favor of the remaining eleven windows being replaced in this project completed so that the windows are consistent all the way around the building, thereby keeping the look of the historical neighborhood intact. We ask that you please approve this project. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Steele. The next would be Mike Martin. Mr. Martin will be next up for approval and support. Is Mr. Martin here? Does anyone, Mr. Martin? Mike Martin, can you please unmute yourself and turn on your camera, sir? I see you're down at the bottom of my screen. There he is.
Yeah, I couldn't. Sorry, I couldn't unmute myself.
That's okay.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilors. Uh, my name is Mike Martin. I live at two nine nine seven Northeast Zelkey, nine seven three two one. I've owned several businesses in Albany and currently partner in Valley Fire Control established in nineteen fifty-two. I have lived in Albany Millersburg for seventy-three years. And in the late, or actually in the early nineteen sixties, I intended Memorial Middle School, which was housed at our church current our church current church building. Roughly twenty years ago, I was chairman of the board of Willamette Community Church. At and at that time, one of our members donated quite a bit of money, as was mentioned before. With these funds, we were able to brick brick pointed do to do brick pointing work, replace bricks and install new windows on the west and south sides of the building. Of the roughly two hundred and forty-two total windows in our building, we selected sixty-five percent that needed or need replacement. We are now down to the last four point five percent for eleven windows. Tonight, we're simply asking that you follow the city staff's recommendation and allow us to finish the remaining four point five percent for the eleven remaining windows. And we thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Martin, for your testimony. And I would also now ask the people opposed to the against the changes or the proposal. Uh, first up is Ms. Carrie McQuillan or Mrs. Carrie McQuillan. I believe you're muted.
Oh, thank you. I'm muted. Um, I'm unmuted now. Good evening, councilors and thank you, mayor. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak. I'm Carrie McQuillan five two five Sixth Avenue Southwest. I'm chair of the Landmarks Commission, but I'm speaking as an individual tonight and in no way representing the commission. Um, I wanted to offer a few points about this application from the perspective of someone who has served on landmarks. This case is tough. The applicant is in a crummy situations and we can feel that. This case file also includes the challenging concept of cost prohibitive. I want to address both of those struggles as well as the implications of your decisions for projects moving forward and explain why it is imperative that the city council reject this application. But before I do that briefly, I want to mention a few key pieces of this file. It is a Charles Burghaft Building. It was Albany's high school. The work was done without a permit. The applicant has not demonstrated that the windows were beyond repair nor consulted with a window repair expert. And indeed, much of the safety, the safety issues that they are citing could be fixed with repairs. But most windows, wood windows can be repaired and the photos they submitted are actually some of the better condition I've seen. There's this design of the windows that they have chosen has wholly inappropriate for the building and time. When you do additions to a building, it is supposed to be distinct from the original building, thus using the Art Deco design um on their windows for the older part of the building is inappropriate um based on the Secretary for the Interior Standards. In short, neither the Secretary of the Interior Standards are met nor is the Albany Development Code standards. This building is a big deal and allowing it to pass by standards that are held for all historic contributing properties would be disastrous. But our option is not only to just reject and leave them high and dry. I want to speak to that as well. So back to the pieces that I think are more complicated. I often say that landmarks decisions are not precedent setting. All situations and applications are different. They fall within a continuum. But that said, because this building is so noteworthy and because the installation of the vinyl windows is one of the most incompatible choices for a historic property. This application just demonstrates two extremes that when combined essentially encompass the continuum in a way that I believe is precedent setting. This applicant cannot be viewed in isolation. So cost prohibitive. First, it is widely recognized that you will pay more for. So cost prohibitive. First, it is widely recognized that you will pay more for projects on a historic property. That's part of the stewardship of it. The materials needed are often more expensive, but more expensive is not synonymous with cost prohibitive. In general, we consider it to be cost prohibitive if the materials are vastly different in cost. Things like copper gutters versus aluminum gutters or slate roofs versus composition shingle roofs, which are widely different in their cost or wildly different in their cost. The cost differences between wood and vinyl windows fall very short of cost prohibitive. Additionally, if you consider the cost over time and repairability, maintaining wood windows is more cost effective in the long term. Repairs to wood windows can also be more affordable than vinyl replacements. We must focus on the relative cost of materials rather than the financial circumstances of the applicant to avoid in-depth and inappropriate reviews of applicant finances. This would lead to a different design standard for every structure in the district. Further, that standard for each structure would shift each time ownership shifted. You can readily see the problem. Landmarks and city council decisions must be made based on the code and a common design metric. They cannot be based on individual financial circumstances. Let's talk about the emotional pull of the application. The effort and money lost here is gut wrenching. We are hearing their story firsthand and yet we must place that in context. Our districts are essential to the character and prosperity of Albany. They drive tourism and help support our local businesses. A collective of citizens of Albany recognize this and work together to turn their stories of success and preservation into a depersonalized version embodied in the Albany Development Code code and in the adoption of the Secretary of the Interior Standards. When we hear cases, our job is to interpret the code and not give our opinion about the situation broadly. This helps us honor all the stories and balance. The result of choosing to approve this would be irreparable damage to the historic districts and the ro- to the role of landmarks commission. It would communicate that work done without permits and review would be excused regardless of the intent of this applicant. It could prompt more tricky people to feign ignorance in order to have unpermitted projects move forward. It would also call into question all decisions of landmarks and it would be more likely to hear more appeals. In my experience, landmarks works collaboratively with our applicants. We attend to their stories and when we place conditions on our approval, we usually check in with applicants to see how they might impact their project. I dearly wish this project had come to the right channels and we had had the opportunity to work with this group from the beginning, but that is not what happened and we cannot accept the fallout from this is this precedent setting decision simply because we sympathize with their plight. In my six years on landmarks, to my recollection, election, we have only denied two applications and this is the only one unanimously denied. I have to tell you, as far as I could tell, members came to their decision independently and promptly. While many, myself included, were saddened at the impact of the decision that the church would make on the congregation, it was clear that there was no way forward with this application. Again, this is Albany's high school, a Charles Burghrath masterpiece. And barring that, not alignment of the code, but on a brighter note, while I believe this story could not be allowed to cause the damage it could to our code and our process through the approval of this application, I do firmly believe that we can be helpful to the applicant and guide them to a good option for everyone. We can choose preservation and help these folks. We can direct the applicant to Cara to help them with funding. We encourage them to seek grants. My goodness, a Charles Burghrath building, that was the old high school. It should be a shoo-in for grant funding. Deciding not to approve the application does not have to be a decision to leave the applicant out in the rain. The application can be denied and at the same time, a helpful hand of understanding can be extended. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mrs. McQuillan, you did say you were testifying as a citizen, but you spoke all of landmarks during this present testimony. So I would ask in the future if we speak to city council as a citizen, speak as a citizen, not as a landmark commission. Thank you.
I apologize for that. I.
Although I understand. Thank you very much for your testimony. Uh, next up is and against is Richard Engelmann, Eman, Eman, yes.
Engelman. Yes, uh, thank you. Um, thank you for, uh, giving me a few moments here. Um, I am Richard Engelmann, uh, nine five five Fifth Avenue Southwest, um, Albany. And I am, uh, in this, uh, talk representing the, uh, organization Friends of Historic Albany. Um, we ask that you deny the applicant's request to use substitute materials. It's already been stated that, that, uh, the windows need to be so deteriorated or damaged, they cannot be repaired and the materials would, um, match, that would match the original windows could be cost prohibitive. The original windows on the Third Avenue facade of the building are certainly a character defining feature. And yet, according to the applicant's testimony at the landmarks commission meeting, repair of these windows rather than replacement was not investigated. Although repair was not considered, the applicant appears to see value in the reuse of the original sashes as their application states that there are plans to offer some of the replaced sashes to bidders interested in historic building materials. Fortunately, the wooden sashes from the original twenty-three windows replaced to date on the Third Avenue facade are being stored by the contractor according to the applicant's testimony. This offers the opportunity for the applicant to correct the mistake made on this project by evaluating the repair rather than the replacement of the original sashes for all thirty-four windows on the front Third Avenue facade of this historic building. I can't imagine that these sashes can't be repaired. And speaking for the Friends of Historic Albany, uh, would gladly assist in identifying resources to assist in the evaluation. The community of Albany has in the past taken pride in the city's history and the fact that they are home to four historic districts. The Landmark Commission, selected by the city council for their knowledge and experience with historic rehabilitation and restoration projects, are responsible for protecting the integrity of the city's historic resources. I ask you to support the commission and let them do their job. Um, I think that, uh, there are possibilities for this project to go forward. Um, but we need to do that, um, in full consideration of our own code and of the community's larger needs. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your testimony this evening. The council is taking that on advisement, advisement. Uh, next is Cameron Sotomayor. Mr. Sotomayor, you have three minutes.
Can you see me? I'd actually like to have, uh, staff pull up, uh, the agenda packets so I can point out a couple items from it. Could staff pull up, uh, agenda packet page seventy-seven, which we'll talk about in a minute.
The agenda packet or the presentation done by landmarks? Okay, here we go.
This is in the agenda packet.
Okay. Let me see the numbers.
You said page seventy-seven?
Page seventy-seven, yes.
Is that it?
No.
I think seventy-seven has the colors on it. What's the difference, right?
No, that, I do want to look at that. That's page forty-nine, but that comes later. It's right there. You just scroll by it. One down. Scroll down just a little bit of that page. Yes, that one. Thank you. My name is Kevin Sotomayor. I live at two three zero Seventh Avenue Southwest Albany, Oregon nine seven three two one. Uh, I'm imposed to the completely out of character vinyl windows in HI twelve twenty-one. Um, first thing, I want to make an objection to this three-minute time limit. Uh, that was actually approved by council as business from the public, not in a quasi judicial land use hearing. Um, issues have to be brought up with enough detail for the council to make a decision. They also have to be made with enough detail, uh, for an appeal. Um, and three minutes does not allow me to address everything, um, even though it is all related to the applicable code. Um, Albany Development Code seven point one seven zero says purpose, the purpose of reviewing the use of substitute materials is to encourage a preservation of characteristics and materials of the historic architectural style. Albany Development Code seven point two zero zero says there are two eligibility requirements and it has to be both of them. The window is so deteriorated or damaged that it cannot be repaired and finding matching materials is cost prohibitive. Um, the applicant notes that the windows did not have dry rot. The conditions shown are all repairable, cracked panes, broken counterweight codes, cords, et cetera. Um, if the windows are jammed, they can be sanded down. I've had to fix jammed, uh, wooden windows, um, pull them out, sand them if necessary, put them back in. I fixed broken windows. Um, these can be done off-site. Any, uh, lead to worry about onsite would happen was you're pulling them out to replace this vinyl window or the, uh, wood windows because the wind windows, wooden windows can be done off-site. Each window needs to be evaluated individually. The application form itself says a photo of every window needs to be required that shows the current condition of the window. You can't show three windows of repairable conditions and say they all need to be replaced. Um, and then there's no quote from any professional saying they're not repairable. That was never followed through with. Um, they should have waited to get an actual restoration expert to look at those to repair the windows. Concerning the cost, the cost is two X for windows, but the burden of proof is on the applicant that two X is cost prohibitive. This is a multi-year project. I've been talking about this for twenty years. You need to look at the long-term costs, not just the upfront costs. I sent you guys in an email link to a Washington Post article that says the vinyl windows, you can expect them to last about twenty-five years. Wind windows can last hundreds of years. And again, I've sent, uh, evidence in that via email document. Twice the lifespan at two X of upfront cost equals the same total cost. Four X the lifespan is half the long-term cost. The applicant in front of landmarks also said energy efficiency was a driving factor. This is not a legal eligibility requirement, but it's also misguided. Scientific study after scientific study has shown that properly maintained wood windows with storm windows added are just as efficient as vinyl double pane windows. And again, there are scientific studies that I emailed you that support that. So if you look here on this agenda packet, the very bottom of it, on this quote, it says right there, excludes any permit or historic review approval at the responsibility of WCC. And so it shows right there when they're looking at these windows that they needed to check was the city of Albany to see if there was historic review approval required or not. Right there on the quote from Davis Glass. The, to, to spend fifty-five thousand dollars and say eighty percent is paid on something that was done illegally. And then say, oh, well, it's not affordable because we've already paid this money. That's setting a terrible precedent to illegally remove windows. And then say, oh, we've already invested this much, so just, you know, don't pay attention to the code. Albany Development Code seven point two one zero, section one says, the proposed substitute materials must approximate in placement, profile, size, proportion and general appearance the existing siding window or trim. The city of Albany's guidelines for acceptable rehabilitation help clarify this by stating if original windows cannot be repaired, new windows need to match the original window details, including materials, wood, opening size, style and mutton pattern, mutton size, shape, width and profiles and L extensions. So again, if you look at this quote from Davis Glass shown on the applicant on page seventy-seven, they show that they are one, uh, one over two, not one over one. So they don't match what was there. They had one over one double hung and replacing them was one over two single hung. So if you could move, uh, to the agenda packet page forty-nine, please. If you look at the application form and that's on agenda page thirty-nine, if you want to look it up yourselves, it says note, new windows must match the stuff, style and profile of the original windows. For example, a single pane sash must be replaced with a single pane sash. A six pane sash mu- must be replaced with a six pane sash. One over one needs to be replaced with one over two, not one over one. Profiles are not the same. They're not even close. And, and again, they're thinking about finding a match it to a completely different bit and style. You're supposed to replace the original existing window matching, not a different section of the building from a different era. I also want to mention that vinyl does not have the same appearance as wood. It has different surface texture. It has a different appearance. Plastic and wood are not the same. So if we could pull up, uh, photo on page forty-nine. So if you look at these windows, you can see in the, the middle section, they're the original one over ones. And they have a narrower rail around all sides of the window. And what's especially noticeable is the narrow rail between the top and the bottom sashes. This is very typical for turn of the century and slightly after turn of the century architecture, be it residential, commercial, institutional. And if you look at the windows that have been replaced above in blue, you're going to see three sections, not two. That's a complete mismatch. Three sections is completely out of the style for that era. It's completely inappropriate. Albany Development seven point two one zero, section four says, a proposed siding windows of trim must not damage, destroy or otherwise affect decorative or character defining features of the building. The city of Albany's guidelines for alterations, rehabilitations, in addition, says, the design and pattern window openings in a building is one of the most significant important elements of defining its character and the data construction. The National Register nomination form, which is on your agenda packet page twenty-five, says of the character defining feature and it's the direct code, typical windows on the original building have double hung wood sash, one light over one.
Excuse me, Mr. Sotomayor.
These windows have a significant presence composing fifty-five, fifty percent of the outside wall in the classroom. And removing or replacing this destroys with vinyl destroys the character defining features of the school. Yes?
So you're doing the presentation over again. Can you please, you're, you're at ten minutes. Can you please complete your comments so we can move on to the next person? We've read the packet.
So it, it doesn't mean the eligibility requirements of ADC seven point two zero zero. The appearance confirms of ADC seven point two one zero one or the, or saving the character defining features of Albany Development Code seven point two one zero four. Landmarks understood this. You need to uphold this. Um, and again, I protest the, uh, timeline.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much. And Mr. Mrs., um, is it Bernadette Nederer?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Please make your comments.
So, uh, Albany Councilors, my name is Bernadette Nederer. I live at eleven sixteen eleventh in Albany, um, Southwest. Um, I have a master's degree in historic preservation from the University of Oregon. I have worked in architectural history and historic preservation for over twenty years now. Um, this is the area of my expertise. Um, I strongly urge the city council to uphold the unanimous landmarks commission's decision in HI twelve twenty-one, uh, concerning the replacement of the original wood windows. Um, we've established that this is a significant building in the Hackelman Historic District. And that means this building is listed on the National Register of Historic Places. Um, the district was established in nineteen eighty-two. Um, at that time, the Willamette Community Church already owned the building. So it has been, um, thirty-nine years of his, under thirty, you know, thirty-nine years of historic district status um, that the church has been part of. Um. The city has gone to great efforts and over every year to reach out to property owners to make them know that they are living, have a property in the historic district. And I find it impossible to believe that WCC never heard of this. Um, and was not aware that they needed to follow these guidelines. Um, oh, hundreds of property owners have followed these guidelines and it's unfair to them if WCC does not have to follow those guidelines. Um, I'd like to actually jump ahead and, uh, one thing, uh, mentioned briefly. Um, the landmarks commission has had a significant staff turnover over the last couple of months. At this point, as wonderful a job as Nikki Cross has done with this, um, the landmarks commissioners have more experience and more savvy about preservation than staff does. Um, so we need to listen to them and, uh, think about, take the staff recommendations with a grain of salt and I've outlined in a handout or in my, uh, written comments. Um, but I'd also like to note that there are solutions and we need to look at solutions that can be worked on. Um, the, what should happen is that the eleven windows that have not been replaced yet should remain in place and they should be repaired. Um, those sashes that have been removed to be collected, stored, gradually repaired and returned to their original place. Um, Willamette Community Church has proven that they're great at doing phased projects. This can be another phased project. I don't think it's punitive. Um, Bellemi Community Church has proven that they're great at doing phased projects. This can be another phased project. I don't think it's punitive to make them return what has been done. Um, a maintenance plan needs to be developed for the remaining windows um to make sure that they are safe, that they will not endanger anyone because if these windows are a danger, then they all should go obviously, but they're not. Um, they can be repaired and maintained. Um, an M O A really should be done that those windows, vinyl windows on the south side, as they fail, they should be replaced with wood or a more compatible, a window in a more compatible configuration that is there than what is there now. Um, I understand they were replaced 20 years ago, but if their replacement date is coming up now, let's make it a better window. Let's make it a better building. Um, because with the windows, the way they are now, they are impacting the building. This building would no longer be eligible for the National Register on an individual basis with these vinyl windows. It is still eligible as part of a district, the sort of a mitigating larger picture. But these vinyl windows have affected the integrity of the building and the strength of the historic district. And we need to work to figure out how to solve that. And we can do that. We can do that with landmarks commission uh with nonprofit organizations like Friends of Historic Albany and Restore Oregon and with the State of Store Preservation Office. There are options and especially if the applicant is willing to go through collaborative efforts and phased approaches. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Miss Miss Nederer. Appreciate it. Okay, uh, we will now, uh, those who registered to speak will have already completed their presentations. We will now take public testimony from those who did not register to speak beforehand. If you would like to speak, turn on your camera and raise your hand. We call upon by the chair or by the mayor and unmuted. If you are attending by phone, please unmute yourself and state your your name and so the mayor can call upon you to speak. Does anybody see any hands up? Seeing none. Uh, does any member of the audience wish to speak in favor of this application? I don't see any hands. Does any member of the audience speak to speak in opposition or express concerns about the application? We've had presentations. I'm clicking screens. I don't see any new hands. Does the applicant have any rebuttal testimony? I don't see any hands. Uh, does it? Is any staff members wish to respond to any testimony presented?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have a procedural question that would like to raise at this time? If so, please turn on your camera and raise your hand to be called upon, or if you are attending by phone, please unmute yourself and state your name so the chair can she can be recognized and call on speak. I see councillor Smith has a hand up.
Procedural question. Um, Mr. Stellmeyer raised the issue of the three-minute limit and the effect of that on any uh raising issues that uh could be used for the basis for an appeal. Uh, Mr. Stellmeyer submitted substantial documents this afternoon as part of the record. And I I am thinking that those would be sufficient to cover any issues that he might want to raise on appeal. I'm sure it's in there somewhere. Um, so I asked the city attorney to clarify that for me.
Yeah, thank you, councillor Smith. That they would be sufficient to uh appeal uh to the Landy's Board of Appeals and would be part of the record, considered part of the record when it if that were to happen, it would be part of the record that was submitted to the Landy's Board of Appeals.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Smith. Okay, I declare the public meeting closed at this time at seven thirty one P M uh the thirteenth of October twenty twenty one. Uh, does the council wish to discuss this case and questions or ask questions of the staff?
Um, I do.
Councillor Olson? And then councillor Johnson afterwards. And then councillor Novak. What councillor Olson?
Oh, okay. Um, uh, yes, this uh uh, this discussion puts me in a difficult place. And it dates back to again, the central school in nineteen eighty. And if you've read my uh write-up on what happened then, uh, you may possibly remember that um one of the key people in saving central school was uh Mr. Lee Ike, who discovered the uh the anchors that anchored the uh walls to the uh Joyce and uh and made the building um um earthquake safe at that point. So uh, I'm having a hard time to uh uh, say that I I think that we really need to uphold the decision of our landmarks commission. And um and ask uh ask that the petition, the petition by the church be denied.
Are you finished councillor Olson?
Um, I'm thinking about something else, but I'm
We can come back and come back to you. I can come back to you. So councillor Johnson, you're next up, and then councillor Novak and then councillor Kupczynski and then councillor.
Thank you. Yeah. Um, the um, one of the applicants, either the pastor or the other gentleman stated that apparently they tried to find to get the records that they thought um that they figured in the past that had been gotten, what was required, and that the city couldn't provide it because of change of record keeping. Um. That goes, you know, if if they tried and they couldn't get the records to make sure that, you know, because everybody's everybody there probably is new, the pastor, the contractor, whoever. And so I'm thinking that they at at least they tried, yeah, attempted. And then um I think Mr. Settlemeyer was the one that said that no, it was the it was the last lady Bernadette, I think, that said that um landmarks attempted to work with the applicants, but it doesn't sound like it to me if they just denied it. I mean, I would think that it would have gone on further to say, hey, let's work this out and maybe they could have. And then also I just had, uh, I agree with you, Mr. Mayor, that um, hmm, which one was it? I wrote them all down, but the, oh, the um chairman of the landmarks commission. Hmm, that was not a personal statement. And so um, I just don't think that should have been brought into it. Uh, it was, I mean, there was, there was ninety ninety-five percent landmarks issues and five percent personals. So um I do believe, I mean, to, in my opinion, um what's already done is done. And I don't think this is going to set a precedent because if the applicant tried to find out what in the records, what was really got what permits had been gotten and what they were supposed to do and the city couldn't provide. Um. You know, they did what they could and figured that everything was okay. And so I'm I'm still not decided, but you know, leaning toward uh letting them finish it so that it'll be a better building and it'll be safer and it'll be more weatherproof. And so um, that's where I'm standing right now. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Johnson. So councillor Novak, you're next up.
Yes, thank you. Um, well, I first of all, I want to say that uh I I noted the fact that we were told that landmarks was one hundred percent on the same page in their decision-making. I know that's not an everyday situation and I have to respect that, which I do. Um, I will also say that I have been in that church building, um, both in the auditorium and also uh, on a few very happy occasions, playing pickleball in the gym. And I love every historic aspect of that building. And I would seek to see those things honored and kept. Um, also, by the same token, I I my heart absolutely goes out to the folks who attend the church there. And um, I I I see their point of view as well, one hundred percent. What I'm wondering because the folks on landmarks who've spoken, they say that there are things that can be done to uh maintain and restore the original historic uh quality of those buildings and uh of the windows in the building and the building itself. I would like to see if if there is such a thing, if there are, you know, they mentioned Cara and and perhaps Cara could help with funding to restore things. And I think that would be a worthy use of Cara funds absolutely, given the fact that this is a Charles Burghrath building and a huge big deal, not only in our city, but nationally. I I I really respect that and I I I take that into consideration. Um, I I'm really hopeful that there's some way to meet in the middle, that there is something that we can do. I'm horrified when when that sweet woman raised her partially missing elbow, the thought that those windows that that some little one or even a grown adult could could be harmed because of the windows that are there. I that's unacceptable. That's not safe. And I would I can't countenance the possibility that that could happen to someone at this time. And I hope that's not the case. But if it is not okay, I I just, as I say, I'm so in the middle here. I'm so torn. I want to see the building historically as it should be, and I want to see people safe and nothing, no harm coming to anyone. I also understand financial aspects, and I certainly understand that things can happen where, as councillor Johnson mentioned, lost records at the city, no way to tell, you know, what was the actual situation 20 years ago? And and I would agree with her there that, okay, what was done 20 years ago, it's done. And maybe if there's a way to, as forgive me, the lady on the historical committee with the masters, I don't remember your name, but I respect you. Um, what she said that as these things fail now, as they're coming to the end of their 20-year lifespan and they need to be replaced, we they could do it in such a way that restores the historicity somehow. And I would think that if there's a way to do that, and everyone keeps saying there is, the people who are on the historical landmarks board are saying that, well, then let's find it. Let's do it. Let's make a way. But at the same time, taking safety into consideration, taking the work that's been done over these last decades, and the fact that I believe these are good people who are not trying to do anything untoward in any way. I'm sure we all can see that, but um, I don't know. I just think it's almost like a Solomon issue. How do we, how do we walk the line and and use wisdom and and you know, do it right and honor everything that is worthy of honor in this situation. And forgive me for going on so long, but um, also, what I was trying to say earlier, if I understood Mr. Ike's presentation, they were wanting to do the two pains. Is that what is called two pains? The two instead of three. But from what he presented, those companies said that they could only go so tall with two pains, they had to go to three. That was my understanding. So I don't know. I don't know how this stuff works. I'm not a architect or a contractor. I'm all for keeping historical accuracy. Um, but I I feel like they made a good faith effort, at least in the past, if not the present, and maybe they should have gone with the most recent stuff to um to landmarks and the city and said, we need to do this right. I don't know. I just, oh, I just want to, I want to see I want to see that taken care of. I want to see the historicity being honored and no one losing body parts.
Good. Thank you. Thank you so much, councillor. And you did really great. So don't ever apologize for speaking your mind on behalf of citizens, okay? So thank you for that. Uh, councillor Kupczynski, you're next up, and councillor Smith and the councillor Bartholomew.
Okay, I'm going to basically grouse a little bit about some historical perspective from my limited time on city council. Over the years, uh, staff is basically, um, I'm sure I could be corrected on this, required to justify the position and they can turn on a dime and come up with the exact opposite tack uh for a position on something like what we're going through right now. That being said, having pored over multiple pages of the documentation that we received for this uh item right now, uh, it sure seems to me in the in in my reading of it anyway, it's just my opinion that the arguments made in favor of the denial by uh those folks were way, way outweighed uh the staff arguments uh to uh accept the proposal. And basically, uh, notwithstanding some of the other arguments that were brought up this evening, I'm still going to stick with it. I I believe that we absolutely should deny that application and a phased approach could be done. And I would even suggest that a phased approach could be done to uh restore the original windows, especially if they've got them in place to keep the original uh look of a historic building. Because once it's gone, uh, you basically, they're asking us to approve uh, it's a thin entering wedge, I think. And I just don't think it's right. And I think I'm going to vote it. I'm going to vote to deny the application.
Thank you, sir. Uh, next up is councillor Smith.
Thank you. I have a list, as you might expect. Um, I'm addressing some comments that have that were made by others who spoke this evening. Um, Ms. McQuillan described um the building as a Charles Burghrath masterpiece. And the photos, the original photos that Mr. Ike showed um would certainly support that description. Unfortunately, a lot of the things that made that a masterpiece are gone. That beautiful uh brick entry on the one side, gone. The pediments up above, um, gone. Um, except for the one in the middle. So that has happened over time. Um, the um Ms. McQuillan also suggested, um, as uh possibly referring this to Cara for grant funding to help with um the cost. Cara is not issuing any grants any longer. The board has decided that that is done. We're focused on the waterfront and the two uh built the Saint Francis Hotel and the Wells Fargo Building. Those grants are not possible any longer. So I just wanted to clarify that and reinforce that. Um, Ms. uh Nederer uh made some very compelling arguments, not arguments really, but proposed solutions in the letter that she submitted in the materials that we received this afternoon. And she mentioned that in her uh verbal testimony, and I think there are some some uh very valid points to look at there. I agree with councillor Kupczynski about the phased approach to possibly doing the restoration. Um, I am dismayed uh that, as Ms. Nederer said, that the church apparently did not know that there were historic requirements for a building in the district, specifically a building that is listed on the National Register. That that is astonishing to me that that they didn't know that. And but I'm also um and I'm not sure disappointed or surprised that uh the people who are are the the major supporters of the of historic preservation in Albany, and there are many of us slash them, didn't see this happening 20 years ago. It 20 years, they've been working on this project. Um, and I it, you would think we have an inventory of these of buildings and people who like to look at them and know that they're there and that they're preserved and pristine. And they didn't know this. And all of a sudden now, twenty twenty one, this is a big issue. And so it's it's disappointing for the people in the church who have have work that they are they're wanting to do and have started doing and have are doing it with the best intentions. Um, but um, the watchdogs were taking a nap. Um, and I'm sure the watchdogs wouldn't be in a position to be punitive and critical if they had had the opportunity to help them from the start. So um, those are just some some things that uh, that's my list. I just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Smith. Uh, councillor Bartholomew, you're next up.
Thank you, Mayor, and I appreciate the comments of my previous councillors. Um, some of them will be the same as mine. I I read through all of the materials previously when we, when it was brought to the council before, but then uh removed and then the materials that were added at this time. It's an extensive amount of information. And I really appreciated all of it. And I lived in a historic district at one point downtown in a home that was not a historic building because of the extensive renovations that had happened to it. But because it was in the historic district, I knew to ask if I, to, to, in order to make any changes to my building, I knew to ask because it was in the historic district. And so that, that part is a, is a part that really astounds me that they have, they have been a long term and they have helped on other buildings, as Mr. Olson stated, that members of that congregation have helped on to help other buildings maintain their historic historicity or historic reckoning. I think that the offers of help are significant and that there is another solution to this issue that they need to explore and have not done so. And so I am going to uphold the landmarks commission decision.
Thank you, Counselor Bartholomew. I, I would, Counselor Olson, go ahead. I have a comment as well. Go ahead.
Oh, oh, I thought, okay. I'm going to take a chance on this. Do any of the rest of you live in a house that's had double hung sash windows? You do, okay. And have had to struggle with them and, and try and get them to work? Okay. And, well, you can see my double hung sash windows behind me here. And when we moved into this house, we had to struggle with those windows, mainly because the sash ropes had broken. And when the window gets cockeyed, particularly if it's been sitting there a while, and junk has fallen down inside, it's a struggle to use the window. But if you get the sash ropes working and if you open the window occasionally, so it's exercised, and I'm going to try. I gotta get Sandy here out of the way, Mr. Central. But with one finger, up and goes. And down it goes. So what, what with this situation and the arguments I'm having with Central School, I've heard a lot of negative stuff about double hung sash windows. But if you use them on a regular basis, and and I worked on these windows fifty years ago when we moved here. And that window is original, dating from eighteen eighty-eight. It's a hundred and thirty-three years old. And the glass has been replaced because one day my kid, this used to be my kid Jerry's bedroom. Jerry's now fifty-five. He had a pair of boots on, he came into the room, he kicked them off and he kicked it right through the window. So I had to replace the glass. But I'd like to move that we
Can I make my comments first, please?
Oh, yes, pardon me. Yes, right ahead.
So I, I, I do appreciate the hard work done by our Landmarks Commission. I do know that they have a lot of, a hard job to do inside the historic district. One of the reasons I'm in Albany, people that know me, is because Albany is unique in that respect and has historic landmark, it has historic buildings. And when I'm out telling people, family, friends, when I visit other cities, my clients in seventeen states about coming to Albany, I say, we're going to take a tour of our downtown historic district. And we walk, walk around downtown and show them how beautiful Albany is. And so I'm not a voting member unless there's a tie, but I do think that the Landmarks got it right this time, and I hope that they can work with people to ensure that the project is completed. But take the extra step of going through the processes of learning what's available to you through grants, like Mrs. Nederer said. And also, I appreciate Cameron Sotomayor's statements about the value of our historic, our historic buildings. So, so I'm done. I will let the council do its thing. Do I hear a motion regarding the application? And so suggests that motions were provided for you. Oh, Counselor Johnson has a comment now.
Yes, I just wondering, okay, so we go landmarks, well, apparently from different people that have spoken says that landmarks would work with them. So if we, okay, if we to agree to den, I don't know which way it goes, yes or no, it's one of those ballot measure things. If we decide that the church needs to go to at least finish the eleven windows with historically, then what assurance do we have that someone is going to work with them rather than just say, nope, you can't do it, so you've got to do it the other way? I mean, I'm hearing that someone's willing to help them and work with them, but I'm not hearing any solutions at this time, which I'm sure isn't in the, the public hearings. You know, how we're, how we're saying it. So I just wondered, that's important to me, if we can figure out some way to put in the motion that someone does help them rather than just leave them hanging. Thank you.
Thank you. So let me ask, let me ask the city attorney a procedural question. Can we for once the council makes the decision, can we provide guidance to landmarks or staff to work with them, to partner with them, to see if they can come up with solutions?
Absolutely. Absolutely, Mayor.
Thank you. So Counselor Novak?
Thank you, sir. And I guess that's the same thing that was on my heart, what Counselor Johnson said. That was my question. Supposing we say we uphold landmarks decision, what happens with the church? How do they, how do they move forward? I don't, I don't want to leave them hanging high and dry either. Absolutely not. That's what I was so passionate about.
City Attorney, yeah.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, I, I just, yeah.
So counsel, we've all discussed it. Do we have, do I hear a motion regarding the application? I guess the staff supply suggested motions for you to consider. Counselor Novak?
Well, I guess I would move that we uphold the landmarks decision, but with the, it's not addendum, what's the word, that we, with the addition, with the directive, with the whatever, that, that landmarks finds a way to work with the church and that somehow, because they mentioned funding's an issue. I don't know, I just think there has to be a way. If we're asking them to do it according to the historic, historical standards, then, then we need there to be a way forward for them to do that.
So I, I believe it'd be, you'd make the motion to deny the application with conditions.
All right. All right.
I'll second that motion.
So it was just, city attorney, is that correct?
Yep. So if they want to make a motion to deny or uphold landmarks commission's decision with conditions, and those conditions being that, well, I mean, that they, they work with or work with the city council and the applicants to find a, find a path forward. It's kind of a, it's kind of vague because we don't know what that path is. But yeah, it, that would, it would at least get the ball rolling anyway.
Yes.
So you, you agree with that, Counselor Novak?
I do, sir.
Take your motion again with that, with that, and we'll wait a second.
All right. I, I move that we uphold the landmarks commission decision, but with, and I just forgot the word, but with the
Conditions.
Condition, thank you. What, what did I forget? But with the condition that landmarks, the city, whomever, come alongside the church and, and provide a way forward, that the church will actually be able to follow financially and otherwise.
Sounds good to me.
Do I have a second? Or first, I got a question.
I agree with that.
Hang on here. Yes, I guess my concern is that it's, seems awfully loosey goosey as to what the additional requirements might be. First, we have to deny the original application as it was written. And then we can say, I would suggest as an addendum, then kind of what Counselor Novak is saying, advise landmarks to work with them to the best of their ability to have a path forward, but we have no way of knowing what that may be and can't define that at this point in time.
The landmarks says that they want to work with them.
Right.
And that they've offered a path forward, various pathways forward. They've said, all is not lost. We can do, there are things we can do. So I just want to see them do those things.
So we're getting off, off topic. So we have a motion to uphold landmarks decision with, with an addendum or conditions of work, partnering with landmarks to find a way, a path forward. Is that correct? Counselor Kupczynski, everybody, is that okay?
Yes, I'm fine with that.
Okay, so.
It's good to me.
Because we have a motion from Counselor Novak and a second. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So I would like a roll call votes that were clear on the record. Sorry, Allison.
No, that's okay. I just had to reach around and unmute myself. Counselor Kupczynski.
Yes.
Counselor Johnson.
Yes.
Can y'all hear me okay? Okay, good. Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Counselor Olson.
Yes.
Counselor Novak.
Yes.
Counselor Bartholomew.
Yes.
That's six. Thank you very much, Counselor. I appreciate that. Thank you for all the people that spoke this evening. I greatly appreciate contributing to the conversation and ensuring that we're helping, able to work with the church and also with the landmarks commission to see a way forward. I would like to, go ahead and we see, we reached a decision, has the city council made, be appealed to landmarks, land use board appeals by filing a notice to intend to appeal, not later than twenty-one days after decision becomes final. And now I'll come back to the agenda. Give me a second. Click on all these windows. Roll call vote, yes. So the public hearing is closed, and so the next item on the agenda is, before we do the next public hearing, Chief Harden has been waiting to do a presentation. So I'm gonna go ahead and call on her before we start the next public hearing. Chief Harden?
Good evening, Mayor and counselors. Thank you for enduring what seems to be the grandma night for the internet. So I wanted to, to bring Island Wen up. I see her, her picture has popped up there. It, it is absolutely my pleasure to bring this recommendation to the council. We hear the phrase, it takes a village. Well, Island is our village rah rah person, so she really is involved in a lot of really great things for the community, including helping out those who come across our radar on the law enforcement co-compliance side. And our aim is always to fix the problem, not just to enforce the law. So, and she's been a great partner in that. So it's my pleasure to read a letter from our co-compliance officer, Christian Dell, and award her a chief's coin, which is a very rare thing that we give out as a true partner to a safe community. So this letter is from Christian Dell. And he goes, I've been employed as a co-compliance officer since July first of two thousand sixteen, and during this time, I've had the privilege of knowing and working with Island Wen. Mrs. Wen is the backbone to many of our volunteer efforts within the city. She's responsible for organizing hundreds of volunteers for city-sponsored events such as the Albany Big Pickup and the Albany Ivy Pool, in addition to organizing multiple groups to aid people in need. Mrs. Wen is on the board of Fish of Albany, Albany Public School Foundation, Albany Safety Foundation, Albany Public Library, and Lynn Betten Coad. She works endlessly to keep children experiencing food shortages fed through snacks or packs program, which fed over seven hundred students in the Greater Albany Public Schools during the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year. And she manages the Albany area JustServe.org platform to assist neighbors and helping neighbors. Mrs. Wen is not only selfishly organizing the helping of others, but also does a lot of the work herself. Mrs. Wen works alongside others cleaning filthy homes so people can return home, taking out blackberries for individuals who did not have the means or physical ability to do so, and cleaning up properties that may have fallen out of compliance with city standards due to reasons beyond the individual's control. In addition, she is the main reason the Albany Big Pickup is so successful and able to dispose of over two thousand yards of trash that caused blight throughout our city. It is for those reasons and the many unmentioned that could fill a book that I request Island Wen be recognized as an outstanding citizen within the city of Albany. And in that world, that means the chief's coin, which we'll present to you, Island, in person. One of these days we'll get you here. On the back of this chief's coin is Saint Michael, is a protector, and you are truly a protector of our city, and I thank you very much for your service.
Thank you.
Well done. Thank you very much, Chief. Thank you, Mrs. Wen, for doing a great job for the city of Albany. We all appreciate it very much.
It's a great place to be. Thanks, Marilyn. Thank you, Chief.
Fantastic. So I will ask a question. It's now eight PM, just after eight PM. Would anyone like to take a bio break and start, return back in like ten minutes? So Sean, not Sean, Matt, we're going to take a ten minute break. Give everybody a chance to get some coffee, water, do a bio break and start back up at eight?
Thirteen.
Eight thirteen. So see you in a few minutes. Eight thirteen. So see you in a few minutes. If you wish to testify, there are two options available, which are described in the pack in the agenda. Do any members of the. Do any members wish to declare a conflict of interest? Nope, I don't see any. Do any members wish to report and ex any ex parte can contact? I have personal history with the that corner. My daughter used to live in that tiny house. Let the tiny house, the small house right next to the buildings that were demolished. And she lived there for four years while she was going to school, actually three and a half when she was going to school. And so I have had history with those buildings, at least the two were closest to her place. And I was called there several times, which people were trying to break into her car and break into our home. That's my communication. So I also considered a site visit because I was there, the dating the most of properties. Any other members have anything to disclose? Do many inter which, do any members wish to abstain participating in the proceedings? Counselor Smith?
I just need to disclose that I was on the city staff when the buildings were. Closed due to deterioration and unsafe living conditions.
Thank you. That it? That's it? Okay. Does anyone wish to challenge, excuse me, yeah, does anyone wish to challenge the participation of a city council member in this hearing? And decision? If so, please turn on your camera. And raise your hand to be called upon, or if you are attending by phone, please unmute yourself and state your name. And so you can be called on. At this time, I call in for a reading of the meeting procedures by Matt, the community development director, Matt Rutgers.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. For all those wishing to testify, please be aware that you must raise an issue with enough detail to afford the city council and other parties. An opportunity to respond to the issue if you later want to raise that issue on appeal. Testimony and evidence must be directed towards the approval standard staff will describe. Or other criteria in the comprehensive plan or development code that you believe applied to the decision. If additional documents or evidence are provided by any party, the city council may allow a continuance. Or leave the record open to allow the parties reasonable opportunity to respond. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with enough detail. To allow for the local government or its designated to respond to the issue be includes any actions for damages in the Court of Appeals.
Thank you, Matthew. At this time, I call upon the staff report by Planner David Martin.
Thank you. I'd like to share my screen here. Let's see. Okay, can you see the slides?
Yes, it is.
Thank you very much. So just to recap where we're at tonight and why we're here. On. May 4th of 2021, the Land Use Board of Appeals issued a final opinion in order remanding the city's decision. For the city council to reopen the record and provide an opportunity for response concerning new elevation drawings. For proposed storage units that were presented at the June 24th, 2020 City Council Public Hearing. And also to adopt adequate findings regarding the proposed extension of walkways to maintain a unifying development pattern. And so let me first of all, move the slides here. Excuse me for just a minute.
So I would ask the city attorney to make sure we stay on point with this. Okay?
Absolutely. And as soon as the staff makes their. Their report does the staff report, I will, I'll make a comment if that's okay, Mayor.
That's fine. Thank you.
I'm sorry about that. I'm trying to advance my slides and I'm not moving, so.
It's okay.
Out of this.
Ms. McLean, I see that you get married with clean. I see you have a question. Can you hold until the staff report is done?
Okay.
Are you staff?
No, I live at the house you just described your daughter had lived in. I own the house there.
Okay, so yeah, go give me, we'll give, we'll get to you.
Question about the, are we also discussing the street, the changes to Fourth Avenue Southwest? Tonight from the last meeting.
No, not tonight.
Okay, alright.
We got, you ready, David?
Yes, I'm gonna share my screen again and choose a different path this time.
Okay.
Okay.
Excellent.
Alright, are you able to see my screen now?
Yes.
Okay, just a couple of slides. There won't be very many. So to orient people to the particular property, especially for those who weren't on council at that time. It's actually got three addresses because at one time it was three lots. So it's 331 Cala Puya Street Southwest. 525 and 533 Fourth Avenue Southwest. So you'll see that's on the northeast corner of Fourth Cala Puya Street. This is the original site plan that was submitted by the applicant for the purposes of the landmarks. Commission hearing as well as what went to council back in 2020. And if you look on the site plan, kind of towards the the center right side. You'll see four parked cars in a parking lot. And just below that, there's two pairs of four units of storage units. That were shown on the site plan. And no renderings were provided in a timely manner for people in the area to be able to see that. To see whether or not the storage units themselves could meet the historic review for new construction. So what happened is that revised site plans have been submitted recently to clarify the applicant's intent. And are included as attachments to the memo that I sent. And we also prepared a series of bold and strike amendments through track changes of the original April 29th of 2020. Staff report that are now consistent with the applicant's updated plans. Now, my mea culpa is that the changes were intended to all be in blue. Bold and strike format to enable people to see the changes rather than using, say, red and green for people unable to discern. The difference between red and green. Unfortunately, somewhere along the way between the time I did the track changes and the time it went into the council packets. It looks like something happened and they ended up having a lot of my changes turned to bold and red instead. So those are still intended to be the changes that I had here in blue font. Unfortunately, some of those did turn out to be in red font and that was unintentional. All other documents though, from the April 29th, 2020 staff report, including supplemental findings prepared for council and supportive their decision. On July 8th, 2020 remained unchanged. So let me point out here and changes to the revised site plan. These are the two things that were sent back to us on a loop of remand. And so what we have now is the proposed storage units have been removed. The applicants have withdrawn their plans to provide two accessory structures, basically with four storage units on each one. On the northeast side of the property near the parking area. So instead, those units will be replaced with trees, landscaping and covered bicycle parking. And a close up review of the site plan, you would be able to see the bike tracks and the landscaping and trees that are proposed. The second item again was the extension of the walkways. And you'll note on this slide that if you look on the southern side of the two proposed buildings and then along the west side of building two. Along Cala Puya. The applicants proposed to continue the existing established pattern of a five foot wide paved sidewalk with curb and gutter. Along the front edge of the property of budding Fourth Avenue in Cala Puya to ensure unified development pattern is maintained. The prior plans actually showed basically pavement, including where the landscape strips are shown on this plan. So what you see here in the revised plan is what the applicants have submitted. That address the two issues that we were remanded on. So a notice of public hearing was sent September 22nd to 92 property owners. And other parties of interest that participated in the prior hearings on this proposal. And we did receive one written comment from Linda Malickian. Who provided written testimony and that was provided to council members in advance of this meeting. So that's all I have. Do you have any questions?
Counsel, do you have any questions? I see Counselor Johnson was firsthand up.
Yeah, I'm sorry. David, do we have that, excuse me, in our packet? I'm having a. It's small and I couldn't really see what what was different and what wasn't. I mean, do we have an old one in our packet and then that was a new one?
Sure, I can draw your attention which attachment those are with the stock report. So if you look at the staff report packet that you received, look for attachment B1.
B1, okay.
B1 is where you'll see the revised site plan.
Do you have a page number for that?
No, unfortunately, I don't. It follows attachment A17, if that helps.
I don't think I had gone down far enough, so just one second. There's B. You said B17?
No, it's attachment B1, which follows attachment A17. So attachment A is 17 pages.
Counselor Johnson, did you get your question to answer? Are you still looking for that document?
I'm just looking. You go, go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
The Counselor Bartholomew was next, then Counselor Smith.
So these changes now make it in compliance with the requirements of the historic district. I mean, because I think that's what we're looking at. Is that correct?
What it really is is there is a couple of errors that Lupa found. That were part of what they call the remand so that we had to do that part over. And the first one is the the proposed storage units were not provided to the public in a timely manner. For them to be able to review and evaluate that by the time it had gone to city council. So rather than prepare another document that shows proposed storage units. The applicant decided to just simply remove them from their project. So that's how that one particular issue is resolved. The second issue involves the continuation of the existing. Pattern of development concerning the walkways. The sidewalks both to the east of the site and to the north are five feet wide. And then there's landscape strips. Unfortunately, there aren't any trees in the landscape strips right now. But the earlier original rendition of the plan, and I'll put the slide up to show you. The original rendition did not show landscape strip here. It just showed pavement with with four trees here and two on. The original rendition did not show landscape strip here, it just showed pavement with, with four trees here and two on Cala Puya. Which would not be in keeping with the walkability pattern that was formed to the east and to the north. So the revised plan reflects the change that makes it more consistent with what's already there.
I, I also noted in the, in the documents that there were some changes and I, I, I wasn't understanding them. They said, moving five feet closer and, and five feet further away, and I was totally confused by that.
Can you tell me what page this, this was on, was it in the staff report? Bearing in mind that this is like a year and a half ago, so.
And I wasn't part of any decision making back then, so I'm not, I'm not very familiar with this, so I'm trying.
Nope, that's fine.
Would you come back to me, please?
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
And look it up, okay, let me know, councillor Johnson, do you find the information you're looking for?
No, I have not.
Okay, I'm gonna go to councillor Smith until you guys find what you're looking for.
That sounds good, thank you.
Councillor Smith?
My question relates to the letter that was submitted today by Ms. Malickian. She refers to requirements for being in the historic district, historic district guidelines and so on. I've reviewed the zoning map today to refresh my own memory and my. What I saw was that the, the Hackelman Montieth district is across the street. It is not on, it's not, it doesn't apply to the property here, this property is zoned downtown mixed use. Is, is there a historic overlay that applies to this, this property?
There is, this property is one of the few that's in the downtown mixed use zone, which is a new zone created a couple of years ago. But it also lies within the Montieth National Historic District.
It is in the district then?
It is in the district.
Okay, okay.
Thanks for that, David. Councillor brought down me, councillor Johnson, you guys find your information?
I got mine.
Okay, go for it.
Okay, so this is the overall conclusion on page one twenty. Of our pa, of our packet, I don't know what number that is, it looks like it's twelve of fourteen in your staff report.
I see it, yes.
And it's overall conclusion, condition two. And I'm trying to understand this, prior to issuance of a building permit for building two, the applicant shall submit a revised site plan. And that places this front setback of building two no more than five feet closer and no more than five feet farther from the main wall. Of the abutting structure. That doesn't make sense to me, so.
So, okay, let, let me see if I can help with this.
Thank you.
So this was the original staff report that went to the landmarks for the very first hearing on this case back in April of twenty twenty.
Thank you.
The council, after, after an appeals filed, the council took up the. The development proposal for the historic review rather of the development proposal. And council ended up approving the proposal without the conditions that were in the staff report. They adopted a new set of findings and they found that. They approved it without having to accept the conditions of approval that were developed by staff. And so what we did is just to show what's changed in the staff report, we struck condition one because that refers to such restructures. Now being removed by the applicant. But the other conditions that are still in the staff report are the old conditions that were in there before they were overturned by council at a later meeting. So basically, they aren't in effect right now unless council decided to reconsider those conditions.
So city attorney have a comment?
Yes, I, I was, I want to go ahead and kind of give a little, little summary of where we are. Like the last hearing we just had on the church, this is a public hearing. But unlike the last hearing, which was a de novo hearing, an appeal from landmarks to the city council, that is not what this is. We went through that process prior, so this, this matter went before the landmarks commission. The landmarks commission denied the application. The applicant appealed to the city council, the city council approved the application and as David had said. Remove some of the conditions. At that point, some, some citizens took this issue up to Luba. I'll, I'll refer to Luba, Land Use Board of Appeals, but I'll, I'll call it Luba. Luba heard all of the arguments that were made by the petitioners. And came back and said there were two issues that they remanded, which meant they sent them back to the city for further deliberation. Those two issues were the sidewalk extensions and the accessory buildings. That is it, so those are the only two issues that council should be deliberating on tonight. And that public testimony should be applied to tonight. It's not an opportunity to re, rehear the entire project. It, that's not what this is, we're, we're really discussing those two issues, sidewalk extensions, accessory buildings. If, if we have a public testimony tonight on other issues. It's, it's not relevant to what, what this hearing is about. And so I just want to make sure we stay on point there that we're talking about sidewalk extension accessory buildings. Those two, those two items have been removed by the applicant. So the, the issues that were there are not there anymore. And so tonight we'll be hearing that the applicant is present, I believe his attorney is present, probably. Say something similar to what I just said, and I believe the applicant's representative is, is also present tonight. But I just wanted to kind of clarify what we're, what we're actually discussing tonight are the two issues that were sent back on remand from Luba, so.
Thank you, so councillor Johnson and then councillor Olson.
I'm sorry, I did find what I was looking for and I forgot to lower my hand, my apologies.
Okay, thank you, are you, do you want to comment or what would you like to do, are you done?
Yeah, I'm done.
Thank you councillor Johnson, councillor Olson?
Yeah, I'm still a bit confused about the sidewalk issue. Are the sidewalks getting wider or narrower or closer to the building or, I'm confused.
Yes, my understanding is that the sidewalks that are going to be installed with this project. Will simply continue the pattern that's already there to the east and to the north. So if there's five foot sidewalks with a land, with a landscape strip to the east, this will continue that. All the way to Cala Puya and likewise along Cala Puya. So it's a continuation of the existing network rather than something new or different.
So the sidewalks will match up with the existing sidewalks?
That's my understanding, yes.
Um, doesn't seem like there's room with the buildings crowding so close to the street on both, of the streets.
Well, we're gonna hear from the applicant and other folks that signed it, I see director.
Cleared up.
Director Wickers?
Yeah, I just wanted to provide some clarification for councillor Olson, so the, the original proposal when we talk about sidewalk extensions. Rather than having a grassy strip or a planter strip as we call it between the curb and the sidewalk. They had originally proposed to fill that in with all concrete, so it kind of almost looked like downtown where we've got these really wide sidewalk areas. That, that was part of that Luba remand, those sidewalk extensions, so. As, as part of this revised proposal, they've, they've eliminated the sidewalk extensions and gone back to what would be. A traditional setback sidewalk, so you've got a grassy strip in between the curb and, and the sidewalk, which is what exists out there today.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much, okay, we will now, so council's got their clarifying questions answered, I see, well Matthew Roser's hand is still up. We will now take testimony from the applicant, will the applicant please state their, your name, address and make any comments you may have for the council?
Alright, this is Bill Close for the applicant, attorney for the applicant, can, can you hear me, mayor?
I can hear you just fine, Bill.
Oh, great.
I can't see you, no, there you are. I see your name, but I don't see you.
Is your camera on?
Maybe you're not here.
My camera is on. Okay, good. Generally, I sound better than I look anyway, so it's just. I, I understand my clients here and maybe as architects here and they can provide more details on all of this, but. I wanted to, I guess I wanted to say exactly what the city attorney just told you. With, by, and add just a couple more details. The, this is a remand proceeding. And so the aperture of what is on the table before you has been stopped down to a very small hole. And the only thing you can see through the aperture that has been set by Luba is. The two issues that Luba sent back to the city. And these issues, I just want to point out in the grand scheme, I think these are tiny issues. The city council's first approval of this project was appealed both by the Albany friends, historic friends. And by Cameron Settlemyre. Both of those appellants filed separate briefs. And each of those briefs had many issues, allegations of error. And sub-issues, which were also allegations of error. And so my client, actually my office responded to both of those briefs. I never did a count of the total number of issues, but there were probably twenty issues. Total that got briefed and addressed by Luba. I was very pleased that Luba got through all of the big media issues. And then for reasons that still aren't clear to me, when they got down to these two little teensy issues, they said, well, you know, those issues have some merit. The first issue wasn't a substantive issue, it was a procedural issue, and what Luba said was, you know. The final changes you made to your, the final detail you provided. To the city council regarding the design of your accessory buildings, your little storage buildings in the back. That information came in too late and Mr. Settlemyre didn't really have a fair chance to review those plans and complain about them if he didn't like them. The city council on this decision prescribed that those little accessory buildings had to be done in the same style as the primary buildings. Continuity of design and all. But Mr. Settlemyre said to Luba, I never saw those final plans because they were all submitted on the day of the hearing. I just didn't get a fair chance to review those, and Luba said, good enough for us. You need, you get a chance to review those plans and critique them if you don't, if you don't like them. And the second issue had to do with these pesky sidewalk extensions, which I think people on my side of the table didn't even know existed. Mr. Settlemyre raised this issue also, he was, he, he prevailed on both of these issues, friends didn't prevail on any issues. But what he convinced Luba was, look, the sidewalks in this neighborhood are five feet wide. And when you look at these plans, you see the five foot sidewalk, but you also see the concrete being filled in between the sidewalk and curb. So these are really wider sidewalks. And Luba said, well, yeah, city hasn't really shown that that extra concrete keeps the design. Consistent with what else is out there, the five, and five feet is the dominant design. So city needs to explain that better, and so those two issues were the mandate from. Luba that came back to the city for revisiting. And I, I expressed concern to my client, I said, you know, sometimes you'll get two issues coming back from Luba. The record gets opened up and the opponent's putting more evidence, and then the city makes a new decision and. The opponents appeal that decision and suddenly there is four issues at Luba. Resulting from the two issues that originally came back to the city, it becomes a loaves and fishes issue. I said, I'm really concerned about the issues becoming more instead of fewer. My client said, I know what we'll do, we'll get rid of the accessory buildings because then there's nothing to complain about. And we'll just take out the extra concrete adjacent to the sidewalk. To where there's just five feet of concrete, nobody can look at that and say anything other than. This proposal is just continuing the five foot wide sidewalk. And I just thought that was brilliant, and so that's why what you've gotten from my client in the last week or so. Is information amending the plans in a way that should make both of these issues just simply go away. Mr. Settlemyre doesn't have anything to review with respect to the two accessory buildings because those accessory buildings have been taken off the table. And the sidewalk, there's only a five foot strip of concrete in front of this building, these buildings right now. And so there's no reason to argue about whether a wider sidewalk is consistent with the design or the theme in the neighborhood. So that's a long way of saying our approach to resolving these issues is to make the issues go away. Not to make the city council have to struggle with. Making findings about continuity of design or with the sidewalk or anything else. And that's the big picture, we're just trying to simplify things here for you on the remand. And so. Maybe my, my client has some words he wants to add as well, but that pretty much sums up my presentation, and thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Close, Mr. Close, correct?
Yes, thank you.
Mr., oh, Mr. Signer, Mrs. Signer, please.
Are we there?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I think we're just, you know, we were pretty much thrilled with Luba's decision and then we just kind of. Felt like that might be a good idea is to take these things away and keep it clean, I think it'll. Be a more efficient plan, more streamlined paint, plan and should make everybody happy as. Happy as they can be, you know, in a contentious situation, so. You know, I think our advice from council and everybody else was just, hey, let's. Take those issues out and I just feel like it's a better plan this way and. It's what the zone asks for, or what the zone encourages, we're gonna try to. Make that area more beautiful, it's just, I feel a win-win and we're hoping to. You know, get some people in there that will generate a real, you know. Bring up that neighborhood a little more, bring up, you know, get up some vibrancy that the downtown needs and. So we're excited to move forward, feel like this is a. You know, should be a, hopefully a no-brainer, but you know, I guess I've. Felt that way for a year and a half now and we're still sitting here, so anyway, appreciate you guys listening to us and considering our project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Signer. Okay, do any councillors have any, excuse me, I already asked that question. We will now take, be taking public testimony first from those in favor of the applications. Followed by those in opposition or with concerns and finally from anyone who is neutral. If anyone wishes to enter an exhibit into the record as part of their, their testimony, please public, publicly describe the exhibit and email it to. CDAA at cityofalbany.net. Written testimony that was submitted by the deadline via email has been uploaded to the city website and is part of the agenda packet. As I recognize you, please state your full name and address, spell your last name. And make any comments you may have on the council's consideration. Those who are registered to speak during this meeting will now be called upon to present testimony, and I'll go ahead and pull up my list. And my list I have in favor of the changes or in favor of the move, the, the packet is Sergio Cano Soto. So Mr. Cook, Mr. Soto, are you here with us today?
I do not see Mr. Soto on the call.
I do not either. Okay, I don't see Mr. Soto, let me check the other, his other window, the page I have on there. Give me a second, let me check the other page and then we'll go to the one, the other person. I do not see Mr. Soto. Since we have, no, no, Mr. Soto is not present, I'll ask Mr. Settlemyre to. State his case, or state his, make a statement.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, my name is Camus Salomar, I live at two three zero Seventh Avenue Southwest, nine seven three two one here in Albany. Given a little limited scope or review, I want to make two quick points. In staff revised finding one point one four on the sidewalks. It says applicant proposal to continue established pattern of five foot wide paved sidewalk with curb and gutter along the. It says applicant proposal to continue established pattern of five foot wide paved sidewalk with curb and gutter along the frontage of the property. Abutting four seven Southwest and Calipoya Street Southwest to ensure a unified development pattern is maintained. They're saying five foot sidewalk, sidewalk and there is a change, I believe that maintains the verge. However, right after that in the same finding. It says the following onsite pedestrian improvements are proposed. Number one, a paved walkway extension from the interior edge of the existing sidewalk to the front of each building. So there's still a proposal on the inside to expand these sidewalks. When you expand a sidewalk with a paved walkway extension that parallels the sidewalk. You are widening the sidewalk. When you widen the sidewalk from more than five feet, you are changing that sidewalk. You are not maintaining the unified development pattern. The other comment I want to make is that B one, appendix B one in the agenda, which is on page one forty. That view is cropped, so you can't even see any of the sidewalk area. Which deprives the public from an opportunity to actually see a change in the drawing. And so I ask that you deny this application. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Settlemeyer. So does any member of the audience wish to speak in favor of the application? Please raise your hand and turn on the camera. I see no hands. Does any member of the audience which is speaking opposition or express concerns about the application? I see Mary Mc, Ms. McLean, please turn your camera and state your name.
Yes, hi, I'm Mary McLean. I live at five one five Fourth Avenue Southwest. So I am currently the only occupied house on the north side of Fourth Avenue. Between Washington and Calipoya. So my concern, I had, I had understood that we were talking about their proposed changes to Fourth Avenue tonight. Because I had attempted to attend your last meeting and this changes to the street was pushed back. I thought it was pushed back to tonight, but I guess not. But I guess my concern is if they change the current sidewalks, change their landscaping. In such a way that it kind of forces. Your city council's hand to approve their proposed changes to the entire Fourth Avenue. I don't want to say yes, go ahead and go with the sidewalk plan you have. Because sidewalk plan they have supposes you are going to approve the entire change to the street. Because they want to take the whole street, this whole section of Fourth Avenue and. Have their sidewalks, have the new curbs and gutters put in, put in their new plantings and then put in the nose in parking. And so if we say tonight, yeah, go ahead and change your sidewalks, then they're going to change half the sidewalk. And then when they come back to this, let's go ahead and change the rest of the street, they're going to argue, well, you've already let us go halfway. Why don't you go ahead and let us go all the way and change the whole street? And I'm, as a resident here, I don't want this section of the street to end up west. You know, they wanted a one-way street heading west. That's not, that's, I, I want to fight those proposals. So I don't want to give them approval to get halfway done with the project. Because I'm afraid that'll give them leeway to push for the remainder of the project. Does that make sense?
It does make sense. We do appreciate your comments, but tonight we're addressing specifically the sidewalks. And I can tell you that from the last time we discussed the parking, there was significant pushback from the community. And so I would not be concerned at this time until it comes back to us.
Thank you, thank you.
So Director Rutgers has a comment.
Yeah, I did just want to clarify that the, the proposal that council saw earlier and, and Director Bailey could jump in here if she likes. But the proposal for potentially one-way street is a completely separate proposal and will come back to council on a different date. Yeah, it's, it's not, not tied to this project necessarily.
Thank you, Director Rutgers. Okay, is there any other comments? I don't have any other comments coming in. Does any member of the audience which is speak neutrally about the product application? No comments. Does, does the applicant have any rebuttal testimony? I, I see Mr. Singer, Mrs. Singer have their hand up.
Yeah, we, I mean, we really have no rebuttal. I think we're just maintaining what the site plan that we submitted there is and. Feel good about it. I think it's definitely is a unifying sidewalk as any other sidewalk is in that neighborhood. So then I also feel like. You know, I said, there's no issues there that are left to be discussed. So hopefully that's, that's our position, I guess. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Signer. I see Mr., Mr. Close, you put your hand down?
Uh, up, uh, wait.
It's down now.
No, um, trouble here. I'm trying to get my hand raised, sorry.
I'm gonna take a comment from Counselor Smith first and I'll come back to you.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Smith, you're muted.
I will yield to Mr. Close and I'll state my, my issue after, after I hear him.
Good, thank you. Mr. Close?
Thank you. I was touching the wrong part of the screen there. I, I guess I'm concerned about. Mr. Settlemeyer's. Understanding or view of the amended plans. The, the applicant's intent in its, in its amended plans. Is to have an impervious sidewalk along that frontage that is five feet in width. No more, no less, because that's the sidewalk and that width is what continues the pattern in the area. So I guess I'm concerned that Mr. Settlemeyer might be looking at pavers or something that is on the building side. Of that five foot sidewalk and be saying, well, those pavers really widened the sidewalk. And I guess. The question comes down to a, what's a sidewalk really? What if we put gravel in there with, and it was five feet of impervious sidewalk and then eighteen inches of gravel? Would he say that's as part of the sidewalk? I, I, I think. This is the kind of thing that triggers more appeals, you know, and we're all too old for that, particularly me. I guess I would suggest that the city council, if you're willing to approve this thing again. Simply impose a condition that cuts through all of that. White noise that's being generated here and the condition would say something like. The sidewalk impervious surface width along the frontage will be no greater and no less than five feet. Now, that's a plain English condition. And if you impose that condition on this approval, I would suggest that reflects what we've submitted on the plans. But if somebody argues that the plans say something different, if you impose that condition. Then I think we're good to go and we can defend anything at Luba. So that would be something along the lines of a sidewalk impervious. Surface width along the frontage will be no greater and no less than five feet.
Thank you, Mr. Close.
Thank you.
So Counselor, Counselor Smith, your comment?
Counselor Smith is prepared to make a motion. Is that okay with anybody else? All right. I move to reaffirm the July eight.
I have declared a public meeting closed. I declare the public meeting closed at eight fifty six PM. Now. Council, preparations are done. Would you like to make a motion?
I would. I move to reaffirm the July eight twenty twenty city council decision for the proposed new construction application. Planning file HI zero four two zero as conditioned in the current staff report presented tonight. Addressing Land Use Board of Appeals Remand Luba number twenty twenty dash zero seven eight final opinion and order. I would also include a second condition. That the sidewalk impervious surface width be no greater or no, and no less than five feet.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, same, say no. We have a roll call vote, please. That's by the rule.
Counselor Kupczynski. Counselor Johnson.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Counselor Olson. Counselor Novak.
Yes.
Counselor Bartholomew.
Yes.
Five to one.
Thank you very much. A quasi decision, quasi judicial decision, the city council may be appealed to Land Use Board of Appeals, Luba. By filing a notice to intend to appeal not later than twenty-one days and then this session. Thank you very much for your participation. I'm going back to the normal agenda. Okay, next up on the agenda, let me get my, I got some of the pages open here. Okay. A business from the public. The directions from the public or submitted materials are published on the city council agenda. So we go to official agenda. This is a big agenda packet. Give me a second. Persons wanting to address the city council during business from the public and or provide written material for the public record must register and speak. At the attached and attached materials to cityofalbany.net. A council meeting materials before noon of the day of the meeting. So the only person signed up to speak today. There was no written material submitted. Mary Warner, if I'm saying Murray Warner, signed up to speak. Ms. Warner?
Your honor, I'm sorry. It's nine o'clock. Do we have to have a motion to go past?
That's a good point, Counselor Johnson.
So I would, I would make a motion that we. Go past the nine o'clock deadline.
Thank you very much. You have a second? Those of, those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Motion passes, we will continue. Thank you very much, Counselor Johnson, for keeping us on point. So Mary Warner, are you here to?
Um, I'm actually Mary Warner. My maiden name is Mary McLean, my married name. I've recent, I've been married less than a year, so Mary is my new name. And I was going to talk about the street change on Fourth Avenue, but apparently that's not tonight, so. Never mind. Yeah, and I want to say thanks to Counselor Olson for trying to stand up for the integrity of this neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, second reading of an ordinance, non-conforming development code updates DC zero one twenty, twenty twenty one. Director Rutgers and Anne Catlin pages one sixty to two seven on your packet. Will city council, will the city attorney please read the ordinance?
Yes, thank you, mayor. An ordinance admitting ordinance number four 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 one, which adopted the city of Albany Development Code. By amend in the Albany Development Code text and adopting findings.
Move for adoption of the ordinance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Have a second. Those, those in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign or say no?
No, and it's too bad we didn't have any discussion.
Yeah, I raised my hand.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
So council, would you like to discuss it before we vote?
I don't need any discussion, no. I was just hoping that those who wanted to postpone this till January. Would show up, give us some reasons and give us some arguments, but I don't see them. So there are things I really disagree with. We can't have any single family zoning. We can't have any regulations on ADUs. It's just a bunch of stuff being crammed down our throats by the state. And I, I really object to it. And I hope our city attorney can come up with some ideas about how we can push some way somehow. For a little bit of local control of what goes on in our city and our neighborhoods.
So, so, Counselor Olson, I, let me go to the director first before we get back to the council. Go ahead, director.
I just wanted to clarify for Counselor Olson, just to make sure that he's where the, the development code amendment package we're referring to tonight is actually. The non-conforming zone. I think you might be thinking of the House Bill two thousand one code amendment. Will be bringing to council in December. They'll be going to planning commission for public hearings next month.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. Counselor Johnson?
Yes, I want to say that I was voted no last time. And I had talked to Director Rutgers and he answered a lot of my questions as far as. You know, people needing to get all these records and, and whatever. And he explained to me that there are two different parts of it, one state, one city. And so nothing's really changed, but it, you know, kind of like with the, the church, we just. You know, with the records and stuff, we just, you know, they went to the city, didn't get the records now. Is saying that, you know, about the records, you know, that they have to come up with so much if they want to change or if it's non-conforming. So he pretty much answered my questions. Still not totally agree with it, but. If there's any, you know, it's a living document, so if we decide to change it, we can, can in the future. And so I just appreciate his help and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, yes, and I want to say I'm not opposed. Sorry, they have to do all the work on.
Olson. Counselor Novak had her hand up before you spoke.
Oh, pardon me, I didn't see it.
Yeah, that's all right. I was going to yield to Counselor Olson just by virtue of the fact that he's been on the council a lot longer than myself. I wanted to. Respond to what Counselor Johnson had just said. I know it helps me to speak with directors often and to get questions answered. I just wanted clarification. From her meeting with the Director Rutgers. And in regard to this that we are discussing, because I was, I was on the same page with Counselor Olson. I thought we were talking about that, which is. Not coming up until December, which I do agree, it seems to me like the state forces a lot of things that I'm, that I stand against. But, okay, so to this. What, Counselor Johnson, if you could help me, it had to do with the city not having records, non-conforming use. And then if the city can't produce records, who does that fall on? I just don't want to, I don't want to see that fall on. Someone who's trying to develop a property or someone who is a business owner. Who the city doesn't have record of something and so, so then the person is, is in hot water or losing out on an opportunity. Or it puts them in a very bad situation because the city can't find a record. What, can someone help me here? I don't want to vote for something that ties people's hands.
Yeah, and I'll let Director Rutgers answer what he told me.
Sure, I, you know, happy, happy to kind of discuss this. So when, with the, the non-conforming updates that we're proposing, you know, we. We, as far as the, the definition, I know that there were some questions around the definition of lawfully established. And, and, and we've basically kind of clarified what that means. We haven't changed the definition at all. We've, we've provided some clarification to it and, and with that clarification, there was some language in, in the code that talks about the burden of proof. And the burden of proof being with the owner of the property or the business owner, depending on what type of non-conforming situation that you're referring to. I, I will say that even though there is this language about a burden of proof being on the property owner. As people come in, if they, if they have a non-conforming situation, you know, staff is going to help them through that process. And in looking in our public records, which as I explained to, to Counselor Johnson on the planning side, and that's really what we're talking about is. Non-conforming situations involving uses and involving property. nonconforming situations involving uses and involving property. It it's it's a completely separate issue from what we would look at for building permits in building without permits. That's a that's a whole other topic and not being addressed with this developer code update. But in any event, whether we're talking about building permits or land use cases, staff is is here to kind of assist, and we're going to go through all the records that we have, and on the planning side, we have really great records running back into the fifties. And in building permits, you know, there, we do have records going back that far, but unfortunately, a lot of those permit records that are that old don't have a whole lot of detail on them. So it kind of leads us to this little bit of an investigation process to see if we can kind of pair up the improvements and kind of the age of those improvements with the date of the permits. And that can be challenging sometimes, so we really do ask that the applicants kind of dig through their information and anything that they can provide to us. So it's 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 a little bit of an iterative process.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Novak, can you get your question answered?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Can also, can you please read the motion, please?
I believe we had a vote, didn't we, as well? And Counselor Olson voted no, but he was the only.
I did.
That voted no.
So motion passes. Thank you very much for that. Next on the agenda is item eight. It is approval of contract cooperative purchase of compost loader, correct to ten of your packet. Do you have a staff report?
A staff report? No, I have a request. This is, good evening, Mr. Mayor and counselors. You have before you a memo and a resolution requesting that council approve the exemption from competitive bidding requirements through an existing cooperative purchasing agreement with Sourcewell and purchase a new John Deere five forty-four a wheel loader. Following efficient and effective government principles, wastewater administration and leadership team began budgeting funds in fiscal year two thousand fifteen sixteen, allowing for the purchase of new biosolids equipment. Procuring a John Deere load, uh, wheel loader is now required for a new Class A composting project scheduled to be completed in April twenty twenty-two. We conducted some research considering used loaders, but currently, the way the market is, older equipment such as, say, two thousand eight units with ten thousand hours plus hours on them are running a hundred to three hundred thousand dollars, or excuse me, one hundred to a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Two thousand eighteen units with thirty-five hundred hours are are running about a hundred and sixty to a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Most used units go to auction bidding with unpredictable cost, and then you have to arrange delivery and pay the additional cost for that. Costs have risen since February, about seven and a half percent due to COVID. And for fiscal responsibility, staff downsized research efforts for from the model six twenty-four to the five forty-four midsize, saving about fifteen thousand dollars in the process. And additionally, coming October twenty seventh, twenty twenty-one, additional increase of four percent is coming due to the end of John Deere's fiscal year. So that's why I appreciate you allowing us in here tonight with a full schedule. We do have a decision to make that could save eighty-five hundred bucks. Based on research and availability, decision was made to purchase a five forty-four P John Deere loader from Source through Sourcewell. Reasons for that, it's a cooperative agreement, and we'll save forty-one percent. There's a three-year, three-thousand-hour powertrain and hydraulic warranty included. The durability and reliability of John Deere, the local supplier support for maintenance and any kind of mechanical issues and pricing value. Similar fleet provide that we have for Public Works already provides efficiency, consistency of operations, maintenance, and city staff are familiar with the equipment. All maintenance and warranty repairs will be done locally by Papey dealership in Tangent, a Sourcewell contract supplier. There is a five-month lead time if ordered by the end of the month, which would make delivery at the time coincide with the time of startup on our new project, the compost project. I want to emphasize, these funds have already been budgeted for and are allocated in this current biennium. Staff recommends council approve the resolution for exemption from competitive bidding requirements and allow the purchase of new John Deere five forty-four wheel loader. Thank you for your time, and I can take any questions.
Does anyone have questions, or Mr. Prosser?
Nope.
I have a comment.
Counselor, question, and this, Counselor Smith has a comment.
My comment is that Mr. Prosser, whom I have never met, does a great staff report. He covers all the questions that counselors usually ask. Is it local? Can it be fixed locally? How are we saving money? And how much money are we saving? I am impressed. I am impressed.
Thank you very much. I've had plenty of time tonight to get it.
Well, you did it. Yeah. Good job.
Thank you.
Counselor, Counselor Olson, you have a question?
Didn't say do. I've heard and I've read that John Deere is one of the companies that is really guilty of fixing their machinery, so only they can fix it. And at exorbitant prices. Do you know anything about that? And if you've considered it? Well, I have considered it. During the three-year warranty, we'll have to go back to the John Deere dealership to keep that warranty active. But our staff here, our maintenance staff, they are phenomenal. They are familiar with John Deere. They, in talking with them about the John Deere loader, they they prefer the John Deere because, quite frankly, it's standard size, nuts and bolts versus metric or mismatched. And so they prefer the John Deere loader to be able to work on for themselves here in the shop. How long do the guarantees last? It's a three-year, three-thousand-hour guarantee. Okay, so once that's over with, they've got us by the short ones to, if we need any repairs. No, that would go to our maintenance staff here in public. I don't think our maintenance staff is allowed to touch it. I think it has to go to John Deere, and they'll charge. Yeah. So you might look into that. Yeah, that would be under the warranty period, but not after that three-year. Yeah, right. Yeah, we get hung up after that, because because they're not, the warranties are expired. But the equipment is such that we can't, particularly the computer stuff. There's just no way the private guy or mechanics can touch it. But that's what I hear. Maybe I'm wrong. I can assure you, a similar-sized loader that we have here, that street's used quite a bit and collections. It's over twenty years old, and it. Oh, yeah. That's exactly why farmers are going out and buying used stuff. So they aren't caught up in this electronic stuff that they can't fix because they and they have to take it to the dealer. I understand that, Counselor. I'm just trying to show that our maintenance staff does take really excellent care and our technicians. I'm sure, yeah. Take care of our equipment, so I'm confident after the warranty that we won't have the issues. This will be a longstanding loader for the biosolids, the new biosolids compost project. Well, I hope you're right, but I'll bet when the electronics goes good fluid, we get hung up.
So Counselor Johnson?
Yeah, I was gonna say, this is, it's actually good news because it's gonna be good to get that biosolids treatment plant done and on its way, and, you know, I I appreciate the idea of going new instead of used because the amount you say, the amount you have to spend is going to save you in maintenance, and I know what it's like to fix any John Deere tractors and stuff, you know, and it's tell my husband he can't go out there anymore, you know. But anyway, I would like to ma- make a motion to adopt a resolution approving exemption from competitive bidding requirements through a contract with Sourcewell, a governmental agency defined by the American Bar Association Model Procurement Code of state and local governments not to exceed two hundred and eleven thousand three hundred twenty-five dollars to purchase a John Deere five four four P wheel loader.
I have a motion.
Second.
I have that six seconds. Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion, we haven't, you say yes, Counselor Olson?
I did.
I didn't hear what.
Yes.
I didn't hear you. So the motion passes. Thank you very much, Mr. Cross Craig, for bringing a presentation to us.
Thank you very much.
Okay, the next on the adoption consent calendar.
Move to adopt a consent calendar is written.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Those who say no? Thank you. Motion passes. Staff report. Staff report, Parks and Park Service Officer, Chief Harnett and Director Lade, page two twenty-four of your packet.
Good evening. Oh, can you hear me with my new fancy headset?
Yes.
All right. Thanks, Matt, for taking good care of me. Thank you all very much for the opportunity to be back. The chief and I are here to answer any additional questions that you might have based on our conversation on Monday night. And if not, then we are hoping that you all will make a motion to approve the Park Services Officer.
Council?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
There was second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no?
No.
Hearing, we have one no. Thank you. Motion passes five to one. Thank you very much, Chief, and yes.
Excuse me, who was the no vote?
The no vote was, I think it was Counselor Novak.
No, it was not.
Johnson.
It was Counselor Johnson. I'm sorry, Counselor.
Johnson, no. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Johnson. Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Director Lade. Business from the council, item eleven. On my screen is Counselor Olson's first.
Uh, considering the late hour, I'll pass.
Okay, Counselor, Counselor Smith?
One item this evening, the November eleven approaches. Are we going to do the council in the trolley sitting somewhere? For parade, the stationary parade?
So I'll I'll speak to that as soon as we get to me. Okay. Thank you. Counselor Johnson?
Nothing to not, Your Honor.
Thank you. Counselor Kupczynski?
Nothing tonight.
Thank you. Counselor Bartholomew?
I'll wait until the next time.
Counselor Novak?
Nothing more, sir.
Thank you. So all I have is one, a couple of things. We had the the parade, a hybrid parade meeting on Monday. We voted unanimously to make Mr. David Russell the grand marshal of the parade. And while this meeting was going on, I received a text saying that he has accepted the honor of being the grand marshal. Mr. Russell is over a hundred and one years old. He served on the USS Oklahoma at Pearl Harbor. His ship was sunk, and he swam to the Maryland and fought the Japanese attacking Pearl Harbor. But the amazing thing about this gentleman is on December seventh, nineteen forty-four, he was on the USS Mayhand that was torpedoed by a Japanese sub, and he survived that. And he came to Albany, Oregon after he got time in service. And and when I was meeting him the first time, he says, what's that tell you about me? I said, I'm not getting on a ship with you at any time. But he's he suffered the honor of being our grand marshal this year. And so as far as the care, the shuttle or the trolley, we haven't gotten to that point in the agenda yet for the meeting, so we'll meet next Monday from now on. It's every Monday at seven P M. at the YMCA. So if you'd like to participate or offer advice or come share your expertise, please join us at the YMCA. And that is all I had, and also like to congratulate Peter on this, Peter and Julie Chilton and their second anniversary, and that's.
Anniversary.
Indeed.
Yeah, so and with that, I will leave it up to the city manager to report. Director Bailey's sitting in for him today.
I have an hour-long presentation I'd like to provide.
I'll see y'all later.
Nothing. Thank you, Mayor.
Nothing today. Thank you very much. So that was good. So next meeting day, October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty P M. For a work session, and Wednesday, October twenty-seventh at six P M. for a regular meeting.
One comment.
Say again?
One comment. You mentioned that the city manager and his wife are celebrating their second anniversary.
Yes.
My wife and I will be celebrating our fiftieth on Saturday.
I was gonna say that. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
All right, hon. Thank you for sharing that.
Yeah.
And with that, I'll adjourn the meeting. Y'all have a wonderful evening.
Good night.
Thank you.